I found an extra copy of that in my office today. In case it ever comes up.
All right.
I know. So this is resolution six, and it was in May, but I think there's a subsequent. Was it in that? Oh, you don't want it?
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Meadows.
Here.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Here.
Vice Mayor Flagler.
Here.
Mayor Daley.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, so I take public comments before we go into closed session? Is that what we do, or? I'm sorry, no, we just go right into closed session?
It's a study session.
Oh, study session.
And any public comment would be related to the item on the agenda.
Am I looking at the wrong? I might be looking at the wrong agenda. Excuse me for one moment. Just confirm that I've got the right thing. Special meeting agenda. Okay, so we have one discussion item we're going to review and provide direction on the draft budget, and the five-year capital and major maintenance program for fiscal '26 to '30. And I guess there's a short staff report, right? Two slides?
Yes, Mayor. Jesse, if you want to share your screens? So nothing quite packs council chambers like budget, as you can see. We've been working on this budget for about five months now. Jesse, Finance Director, has led the executive team through this based on the council priorities and direction. And I've only have two slides this year, which is fantastic. If we go to the next slide, what we're looking at here is the fund balance sheet. If you're not familiar with budgets, fiscal year budgets, how they work, the numbers can be pretty intimidating, can be difficult to determine what you want to look at. So if I was to explain this budget in 30 seconds, I'm going to try and do it. Here's what it would look like. We can start moving through it, Jesse. So on top, we have a surplus of 5.2 million after transfers. That'll be 1.85 million. We transfer those to the CIP. Council has 11.3 million in emergency and operating reserve, which is 20% of the general fund. In addition to that, we have been able to build up an unassigned general fund reserve of 17.1 million, which is an additional 30%. Putting these together, obviously 50% general fund reserve. Primary reason for that is we're going to move into an area of uncertainty with FEMA and federal emergency response. We've seen in other cities and other states that the response and aid has not come as it had previously. And there's a good chance after earthquake, fire, we'll be taking care, at least initially, but maybe for the long, long term, taking care of the bills ourself. Moving further down, Facility Maintenance Fund, which council established, is now at 13.5 million. That's a new fund, new in government. It's now three years old, but this council established it. Fleet vehicle funds at 1.24 million. Again, that's a new fund. And at the end of the year, after we have made a $5 million discretionary payment to PERS, we'll still have 2 million left in the PERS Reserve Fund. That, that's something at the end of the year we would take to the Finance Commission and look, see if we want to send that over as an additional discretionary payment, or potentially keep it and roll it over to the new year. But that is the projection where we stand today. And with that, rest of the presentation will be Director Kim.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Jessie, and I'm here to present our operating CIMP budgets for '26. We are going to cover a few topics tonight, including city council priorities, '25 and '26 general fund overview, general funding revenue and expenditures, enterprise fund, and the CIMP. Let me start with the council priorities. These priorities are established in January by council, and that provides us with guidance for the year ahead. Those are public safety, business communities, circulation, safety and efficiency, environmental sustainability, housing. For public safety, we've allocated funding for almond fire station roof replacement, fire station improvement, 999 Fremont for police department use, parking enforcement contract, and police building design, and crossing guard that we brought in-house, flock cameras, and drone program. To support business communities, we budgeted for downtown park, EV charging, parking lot resurfacing, and lighting improvements. For circulation, safety, and efficiency, we budgeted for street-related projects, such as resurfacing, striping, slurry seal, and San Antonio Road Complete Street project, which depends on federal funding. Also, we budgeted for traffic and pedestrian system maintenance. To support environmental sustainability, again, we budgeted for downtown EV charging and lighting improvement that also support business communities, and Grand Park solar and battery storage and electronic vehicle purchases. Under housing goal, we budgeted for playgrounds, both for Grand Park and South Park renovations, and downtown park and general plan updates. For facilities, we budgeted for main library to improvements, woodland patio, history museum roof replacement, community center cafe, and CDO emergency backup power generator. So council's long-term goal is to make decisions that are equitable, sustainable, and physically prudent. In support, in support of that, the city created separate fund for facility maintenance and fleet vehicle funding '24, and allocated some of the '24 surplus to those funds. So at the end of the '25, we're expecting 12 million fund balance in facility maintenance, 2 million fund balance in fleet vehicle, and 7 million in PERS Reserve Fund. And at the end of '26, we're projecting 13.5 million in facility maintenance for building use, 1.2 million in fleet vehicle fund for vehicle replacement and depreciations, and 2 million in PERS Reserve after making the ADP to CalPERS. And next slide highlights our support for commissions totaling 9.3 million. That includes 6.3 million in safe routes to school updates, 1.7 million in downtown park, 950,000 for liability improvement, and 200,000 for urban forest master plan, 75,000 for electrification rebate, 50,000 for REIT codes, cost effectiveness study. And then commission-related events or training, such as annual events, seasonal links, and CPARIS conferences. Now we're moving on to '25 general fund overview. In '25, we are expecting 3.4 million increase in revenue, mainly driven by 42% increase in community development fees due to comprehensive fee study and increase, fee increase. We're also seeing 14% increase in utility user tax, mainly because PJ needs multiple rate changes, and 8% increase in other taxes because real estate and hotel room taxes like TOT and DTT continue grow. On spending side, we are expecting 3.6 million increase, mainly driven by 17% increase in development services due to more activities, and 14% increase in public safety due to overtime and animal contract and fire contract. With that, we are expecting 11.6 million surplus in '25, which leaves us with 15.6 million unassigned fund balance after making those planned transfers for reserves and other funds. Now we're moving on to '26 general fund overview. In '26, we are projecting 2.2 million increase in revenue. That includes 7% increase in projected property tax, steady revenue from TOT, DTT, and UUT, 10% increase in recreation revenue due to expansion of recreational activities. And we're expecting slight decrease in interest income, but it will depend on Federal Reserve's direction. On spending side, we are projecting 5.3 million increase in expenditures, driven by 24% increase in development services due to increase in consulting fees, such as plant check services, urban forest master plan, and BMR support. Also, we are projecting 10% increase in parking and recreation, again, due to the expanded recreation activities. With that, we are projecting 8.5 million surplus in '26. That leaves us with 17.2 million in unassigned fund balance, again, after planned transfers for reserves and other funds. And this slide shows our general fund revenue in more detail. Again, we budgeted for our general fund revenue at 65.1 million. It includes 38.2 million from property tax, 7.1 million from community development fee, 4.8 million from other taxes, 4.1 million from utility users tax, 3.6 million from sales tax, and 7.3 million from all other sources. So 90, 59% of our revenue comes from property tax, and 11% from community development fees, and other 11% from all other sources. Compared to 62% from property tax in '25, it shows that we are, our revenue source has been diversified, which is a good sign. And this shows our property tax, trending property tax, which has been increased and expect to increase in '26. This 7% increase is based on Santa Clara County's projection. That includes 5.42% increase in assessed rate, and 27% increase in EROP due to increased funding from the state to the school district. And this slide shows our general fund expenditures by department. City Manager's Office shows 8% decrease in expenditures due to reassessment of stepping and targeted effort for saving costs. Finance and HR shows increase to support fully staffed. And overall, we, we are seeing general fund expenditure of 10% increase. Now we're moving on to enterprise fund. The city has two enterprise funds, sewer and solid waste. For sewer fund, we are projecting 12.5 million revenue, and 11.6 million in expenses. And for solid waste, we are expecting a slight decrease in revenue, while the expenses is expected to increase due to increase in service cost, such as cleaning on ECR or county hazardous waste program. Now we are moving on to CIMP budget. The city is budgeting 24.6 million for projects. This includes workforce and new allocations. Of that, 11.8 million is from general fund, 10.9 million is from special revenue fund, and 1.9 million from enterprise fund. And you, from the graph, you'll see those major funding sources, such as general fund, parking lieu, gas tax, and sewer tax, and sewer fund. And this slide shows our five-year CIMP totaling 53.2 million. Out of that, 14.49 million is from general fund, 5.7 million is from parking lieu, 4 million from gas tax, 12.6 million from sewer fund, and 16 million from the rest of them. And the next couple slides shows our major projects, over 500,000. We are investing on our street-related projects, such as annual street resurfacing, annual street slurry seal, and San Antonio Road Complete Street. We've also budgeted for downtown park space with parking. And we've also budgeted for parks in community areas, such as Hillview, Mackenzie Dog Parks, and downtown parking lot resurfacing, and playgrounds, and emergency operations center. That concludes my presentation. Thank you, and let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mayor. So what Jessie just presented is consistent with the staff report. And maybe I wasn't following what you were presenting correctly, City Manager. But you had a much lesser, well, you had a lesser surplus of 5 point something versus 8.5, which is throughout all of our materials. Can you walk us through that, please? Did you have that too?
So Jessie's probably the best to walk through that. But I was trying to show the, just the fund balances after the projected, if the projected budget were adopted. She's showing after transfers, special funds, all of that. I was showing general fund and where we're at. But for specific questions, I think Jessie's probably the best to walk you through that.
Okay, so I'm not following that explanation then, because if she's showing before transfers out, or including, so 8.5 is bigger than 5.2, that's all I know. So I didn't quite follow where, how those numbers are related. Let me ask that, yeah.
Okay, so 8. lovely million dollars is only for operating. Operating revenue minus operating expenditures. And then what Gabe represented was after transfers and everything. It includes facility maintenance and fleet vehicle and technology fund, the other general fund.
Okay, so, so Gabe's smaller number that this makes sense in is after transfers, okay? But I didn't, I don't know if we had that in the materials, or at least I didn't do the math. So it wasn't included as a summary, but now you've explained it, so I think it makes sense. But it's embarrassing, because I've been saying we have an 8.5 million dollar surplus, and now we don't. Correct. Okay.
Councilmember Meadows, based on the council questions received over the weekend, we added the top-line summaries. We thought it may be easier to track for a member of the general public.
Okay, I didn't see those, but. Sort of, like, you know, I, I trust that that's the answer. I, but I didn't see it in front of me, so it's hard to internalize. Yes. So let me ask another question then. Is this time for a question on the CIMP, MMP2? Or? On everything, on, on the whole kit and kaboodle, as they say. So on the, so just a question, this is all very clearly presented, so thank you for that. Very easy to follow. So when we look at what is estimated to be the end of this fiscal year's numbers, and this doesn't apply to any one of them specifically, but we're so close to the end of the year. So you have confidence in that number as representing our full, our current full fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. And then when I look at next year, we have money thrown against various projects. Do you have confidence that we have the resources to do all those?
So Councilmember Meadows, one of the changes included in the budget this year is additional capital projects support directly in parks and recreation. Stephen Sun, who we know as Transportation Manager, is directly handling streets, transportation, CIP. And then Scott Reeves is acting as a CIP manager that will take on overarching city projects, something like Lacey this year, Police Station potentially. So we had a misalignment of projects with resources, so we've added additional staff in this budget to make sure we can get more done.
Perfect, because, because ideally, this capital improvement and major maintenance project shows us exactly what we're going to deliver to the community next year. And that has not, in the past, always been the case, for, you know, valid, understandable reasons. But it is good to be able to point to this and say, "Next year, you will, we will have this." So thank you for that. I appreciate it. I think that's my questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to start by, by making a disclosure. CIMP number eight is the Woodland Library Patio Project. I own real estate within 500 feet of the Woodland Library, and I'm now going to incur the ire of the City Attorney for not having brought this to her attention earlier. Can I continue with this, with the discussion today? Or since it's not separated out, does that? It's an actual ownership interest in real estate within 500 feet of the library.
Oh, sorry. I would, I would recuse myself, and we can vote on it first, and come back, and we'll discuss the rest of them.
Okay, so I should recuse myself now?
Oh, there's no, oh, you're not voting. Okay. Well, then you should probably refrain from participating on that agenda item. I mean, that line item. That's what we've done before.
Understood, but I could, I could participate with the other items?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We could, we could have you leave the room and have, and have them discuss that and bring you back in, even though you're not voting on it. I think that's what we've done with the last budgets.
Okay, thank you. Then I would request the staff that when we do vote on, on the budget and the CIMP, if anything has to do with the Woodland Library can be separated out, so that I could easily remove myself and then come back.
We did that, I think, with the last budget, like with Grant Park and some of those, where we took, you discussed it, come back in and discuss the rest of them.
I'm in the same vote. For the same address. Because I have a leasehold on it.
So that's going to be a different analysis than the fee interest. So I would, I would step out, and we'll get it resolved for the final vote. Because the leasehold is a little bit different.
Step out now?
Yes, I'd have you both. Oh, we're only going to talk about Woodland, Woodland Park, and then you come back in and discuss the rest of them. Oh, okay.
And it's not clear that we're going to have a specific discussion of that item or not.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. First of all, well, I'll keep with the questions. In the, in the analysis that you've prepared, is, was there any consideration about the current budget crisis at the state capitol, or the different way the federal government is now handling grants and distributions? I know that the majority of our revenues don't come from either the state or from the federal government, but, but things are very different now than they were one, certainly, two years ago. So I'm wondering if there was any analysis of that as the budget was being prepared.
Yeah, we're going to try to budget the revenue in very conservative way, based on like, very solid numbers. For example, like Santa Clara County, like projections.
Okay.
Those are the backups.
And does the state of the economy at all factor into your analysis?
Only for interest income.
Okay.
For the Federal Reserve.
Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So City Attorney, I was going to tease her, but she's not paying attention. I was just going to tease you that I have a conflict too. I don't. Because we're just going.
I think I'm going to make it.
I have a sub, I have a sublease on that property. So of course, thanks to staff and Jessie, Director Kim, and everybody who put this together. Well done. You know, you obviously got into the numbers, Jessie, and I'm very impressed that you're able to manage most of this with your limited time with the city, so thanks for all your work. So I want to pick up, because I had a similar question to Sally's on the surplus, because I was trying to understand that number. So she asked my first question, but my follow-up to that is, how does that relate to the unassigned general fund amount? So you have that surplus amount, but then you also have a unassigned. Can you explain the difference between the two? And does the unassigned general fund include that surplus amount as well, or it doesn't? And how are you treating those two differently?
So the surplus is basically the net income between revenue and expense expenditures. And then unassigned fund balance is equity, after we transfer everything to other funds and support for the revenues, reserves.
Right. So for example, later in the discussion, if I wanted to understand, you know, how much, you know, we have a reserve amount, and we're exceeding that, which is great, but how much of the unassigned amounts we have to discuss possibly funding additional projects or programs? What is that amount?
That's the total unassigned fund balance.
So that's the 17.1.
Correct.
Thank you. And then on the difference between the revenue and the expenditure, I noticed last fiscal year and also your proj- year and also your projection, the expenditures exceeded the revenue. Can you talk to that and what we're doing going forward to ensure that, you know, to the extent we can, that doesn't happen? The planning process that's involved there?
I guess we are, we just need to reassessment our like staffing needs and service needs, and then control our expenditures based on that needs.
So, Vice Mayor, a lot of the projects we've expended funds for our capital, things like Lacey or moving the EOC, we intentionally paid for those in cash, knowing that we wanted to clear the way for a potential Police Station discussion when it comes. So when we look at our operating, very healthy, right? We're going to collect more in the general fund than we're going to expend. We transfer that out to capital projects. We intentionally planned to spend down in cash for large capital projects to give council flexibility when the Police Station discussion comes. So when you see, after the transfer is out, the expenditures exceeding revenue, that's typically for, again, Lacey, EOC, road projects, large infrastructure projects that council has discussed and, and made part of their priorities. So we, we don't have a concern about expenditures exceeding revenues on the operating side.
Thank you. And then my last question has to do with the safer routes to school, and I know, at least for the last year or two years, we have assigned a dollar amount for safer routes to school projects, and we have a map where we identify where we want to implement these different improvements. But I have to admit, and maybe I'm just not following the Complete Streets Commission meetings, that I haven't seen a report where we've actually completed one of these safer routes to school projects. Did we complete one last year? Because I know we'd identified a few throughout the city, and we said our goal was to try to accomplish one or two. I think this goes back to when Councilmember Weinberg was mayor. He said, I want to finish some of these projects. So I'm just curious about the status of, of our safer routes to school projects with regards to completion, where we had identified an area, these are the improvements we want to take, and we've actually checked that box. That school area is now part of the safer routes to school community.
So, Vice Mayor, I think when we look how we prioritize safer routes to schools, how, how we define that becomes important. We've completed projects around a number of schools, Jardine being the, probably the primary example, but, but other schools as well. But when, when we look at Complete Streets, a portion around the high school has been completed, but until that Complete Street is able to go up Distel, up through Mountain View, connecting the other schools, I wouldn't say the Complete Street, or safe, safe route to school has been completed yet. So our, our goal is to complete the high priority projects that the schools and the neighborhoods are asking for in councils directing, and then eventually connect a complete safe route to school. So you'll see pieces around Distel. We added painting, we added charros, we did work on Jardine. We would be happy to provide a report of the projects we completed last year and what's projected this year, when this comes back to council in two weeks.
I, I would appreciate that, and, and we're all familiar with all the work that staff did related to Jardine, and I'm sure that kept you busy. But I would appreciate seeing that, and I guess what would be helpful is to see what the safer routes to school map or improvement plan was for the area, and what has actually been done. And I, and I agree, when you talk about complete, you have to factor in these connecting parts of it, but just even around the high school or another school area, what have we done on the check? Like, these are the things we said we were going to do. What has been done regarding those areas? Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Gabe, maybe either you or Stephen want to talk about the completion of the protected bike lane on Grant? Because that's a, that's probably a safe routes project that just got done last week.
Right there between, in front of St. Simon, we went ahead and placed barricades in front of the school, so that the bike lane is protected from cars wanting to park on this, on the shoulder of the cars. And just to let you know, for the next year's project, we have about 20, or 19 projects that is identified for a complete, safer route to school. Out of that 19, it's probably about 12 of them is going to be worked on areas that is considered safe route to school. In, in our Complete Street Commission meetings, we have assured the commissioners that we're going to go ahead and implement as much of the safe, the, the Complete Street Commission, I'm going to rephrase that, the, the master plan for the, our safe route to school, complete master plan. So we're implementing a lot of this. We're installing a lot of the bike lanes, more barriers, more safe islands, and things like that. And I think we're going to be doing about 3.7 miles next year, and the following year we're looking at about five, five miles worth of work.
Mayor, may I follow up on that? Uh, Stevenson, this might have been last fiscal year rather than this one, but you also did the El Monte Sidewalk Gap Closure Project, which is behind Allman School. It was probably your time, not before your time, sorry. But that put separation between pedestrian and bicycle and whatever, so...
Yeah, we're, we're trying to implement as much of those as possible, when we can, when we have enough real estate in our right of way, that we could implement it. So we've been trying to implement it. If there's enough, we can narrow the roads down more, so we can implement protective bike lanes. We've been trying to do that as well.
Right. So I'm just pointing out that there's one that I drive by a lot, and that's it. So, thank you.
Councilmember Lang, do you have any questions?
Two, I guess. The question would be about some of the maintenance line items in the expenditures. So there's fleet maintenance and facility maintenance. And I noticed that, well, particularly with the facility maintenance, it looks like we're coming in under for the year. And I, I guess the question is, why is that happening? I guess what I'm saying is that when a maintenance number comes in lower than budgeted, that's not always good news. It sometimes can mean that, that maintenance that was intended to happen didn't happen. And I'm curious if that's what that number indicates, and particularly then, what good things have happened that we can spend less on maintenance going forward?
No good things have happened where we can spend less on maintenance going forward. So this is the first year, as council established those two funds, as we showed at the beginning about three years ago, this is the first year we're drawing off of those funds. So you'll see fleet, without having the numbers in front of me, I think it went from 2 million to 1.2 million at the end of, end of the year, because those are for vehicle purchases that comes out of that fund. Or are you talking about a...
I'm not talking about the funds.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm talking about the expenditure lines, right? So it's, they have numbers next to them, like 5220 and 5510.
This will become a Manny question, then.
Okay. And, and this is fairly detailed, so if the correct answer is, we'll get back to you. I can live with that, we're not voting on anything. But I was just sort of curious why they're moving around and, and...
If you could point out which line item, or which page?
In the program expenditures, it's, it's in here.
Okay.
I'm just looking at the budget, the actual and all that.
I don't have it in front of me, Councilmember Lang, but are you speaking on the operating budget?
Yes.
Okay, the operating budget, yes. We are, we do zero-based budgeting, so every year we reanalyze the cost of things, as well as the cost of, of our employees, and everything that's included in the, in that budget that we create from zero. And yeah, that's the number that we came up with this year. It's not that things are, or maintenance is being deferred or anything like that. We are still taking care of everything, it's just some of those costs may have been reduced. Maybe we found out this year that we didn't need as many filters for air conditions and stuff like that. That's all that is, if you're talking about operating.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If my colleagues don't have any other questions now, we'll go to public comment. Do we have any public comment cards?
No.
Okay. Then we'll bring it back for discussion. And I'll look to my colleagues to see if somebody has discussion or commentary. Councilmember Weinberg, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the hard work that went into putting the budget together. I, I know, I say this every year, but I genuinely do appreciate it every year, because I know all the work that goes into this, especially really, Mr. City Manager, what you have done to sort of change the way that, that things are presented. And I think that the community really benefits from the way that we are budgeting, and most importantly, the way that the budget is being presented. It is, you know, an old adage that if you want to know what an agency's priorities are, corporation, whatever, if you want to know what someone's priorities are, don't necessarily look at what they say their priorities are, look at where the money is being spent. And on the one hand, I wish there were more members of the public here that were taking an interest in it. On the other hand, the fact that there aren't, I think, is an indication that people trust what, what staff and, and city leadership are doing in terms of, of making sure that the city is operating in a responsible way. So, so again, thank you, thank you all for that. I'm going to get into the nitty-gritty on one line item in the CIMP, and that, that's item 13, which are the Hillview and McKenzie Dog Parks. The, the two dog parks are now being sort of lumped together as one CIMP. That concerns me a little bit. I know that what we're going to be doing at Hillview is very different from what we're doing at McKenzie, or, or maybe I'm wrong. I mean, at Hillview, we're building a brand new dog park. At McKenzie, we had a pilot program which was successful, and I think now we're, we're going to, to change the interior landscaping. But I also wanted to make sure that, that we're taking a look at the parking out there, because for both the pickleball courts and the dog park, there's no accessible parking. And that, that's something that absolutely has to change. I know I've spoken to city staff about this before. I just want to be sure that, that getting accessible parking at McKenzie for the dog park, for pickleball, for tennis, is, is a part of this budget, and that's one of the things that's going to happen in, in this line item.
So Councilmember Weinberg, the ADA, adding an ADA parking spot is part of this budget. I don't believe it's coming out of that line item. However, it's, this is one of the areas that we struggled with, is we have more use out there. I want Stephen to get, if you could come up to the microphone, to talk about the full quote that we received for, for completing renovation of the parking lot out there, which needs it, particularly with the use. But explain that in this budget, we've reduced the scope of that for the ADA spot in the, the parking lot up front. And if this is an area where, where council has concerned, this, this is something we could change, amend in the budget now.
The original scope of the project was to make, to redo the parking lot, both in the front and in the back, to allow for not only ADA accessible...
Sorry, Stephen, can you turn your microphone on?
Yes. Am I on?
Yeah.
Okay. The original scope of the project was to go ahead and redo the parking lot to not only bring ADA accessible parking to the park itself, but also to work on some of the accessibility of the park, the pathways and so on. When I went out to the, to the consultant community to try to obtain a quote to do that, that aspect of the work, it came in almost $100,000 just for the design itself. And it, it was a lot more than what is anticipated. So we're trying to reduce the scope to address just the parking itself, but it's not just a matter of installing a parking lane with the ramps and so on. The, the pathway is uneven, so the moment we touch that parking space, we have to make sure the path of travel is in compliance as well. So we're trying to assess all that aspect of it and come up with a, a correct scoping to meet the ADA compliance rules. So the cost is, is increasing.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing i- is that staff has looked into this diligently and found out that it's going to be a far more complex and expensive project...
Correct.
...than originally anticipated.
Correct.
Are, are there funds in this budget cycle right now to accommodate that? Or, Mr. City Manager, is that direction that you would need from the council if we were to do that?
So we would need that direction from council. Right now, what's being incorporated is if you, for, for everyone who's familiar, or not familiar with McKenzie Park, there's a large parking lot, and then there's a, a smaller area where cars park up front. It's to repave that area and add an ADA accessible spot there. Once you get beyond, what is it, Stephen, 400 square feet, you have to start looking at drainage and...
Yeah, it's about 5,000 square feet. We have to look at drainage. And that parking in the front is really getting close to that requirement.
So this, so this budget, we've separated those two out to try and add the ADA. I will say that, that parking lot needs to be rehabilitated, but we thought getting the cost together in time for this budget deadline would have been difficult, so it includes only the parking lot up front.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then I will say to my colleagues, there, there are two members of the public that have complained to me about the lack of ADA parking at McKenzie for about half a year now. One, one of them is in fact disabled, and, and she is able to park there, but only if there is a space that has enough space between it and another car, or it's on the end, so she can go into the driveway a little bit. I, frankly, we, our, our facilities should be ADA compliant. I mean, that probably goes without saying, and I, I would go further than just this specific ask and say that as a policy. I think that it would behoove the city to direct staff to make accessible mobility, accessibility, a priority for, for all city projects. But I know this one is impacting a resident's ability to use the dog park, so I, I would look to my colleagues and request support to direct staff to, to make that a priority and try to get that done this budget cycle.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and I support your ask, Councilmember Weinberg, but I may be confused by what Mr. Sun was explaining. I thought, focused on the accessibility parking issue, that's already incorporated. I thought if we wanted it to be a bigger project, that's where we would need to approve additional funds, I thought. So that was my understanding of what Mr. Sun was saying. I think we're already, he's already working on and within the budget. We already have that accommodated.
Included in this budget is only the smaller up front parking lot. So it would add one ADA space and potentially assist in the, the path of travel to McKenzie Dog Park. The parking lot itself does need to be rehabilitated, restripped as well, but it's only, and right now in this budget, it's only including the smaller lot up front.
But the restriping and this additional work you're describing, is it also to add more accessibility parking? I'm trying to reconcile what I'm hearing with what I think Councilmember Weinberg is advocating for.
I'm going to pull up, give me a second.
Okay.
I'm going to pull up a Google map.
The restriping and rehabilitation of the back parking lot isn't in the budget. It's just the front parking lot that's in the budget. It will include a new ADA parking spot in the budget.
Right, and, yes. And that I think we support.
So why, why would we go through the process of paying for and putting in a spot now when we're going to rehabilitate and restripe it in the near future anyway?
Those are two different parking lots. Those are two different parking lots. The parking lot that isn't in the budget, that will be restripped and rehabilitated, is the parking lot that is more or less behind and adjacent to the municipal service yard. And the parking lot that is in the front, more proximate to the dog park itself, and to the courts, is the one that will be, that is covered in this budget.
Okay, I didn't realize those were separate lots. I guess I will anxiously await the, the city managers showing or not.
I'm going to make this more confusing. So, Stephen, you may want to walk us through this, but this area right here, which is what we're referring to, is the front parking lot, we would be adding an ADA spot here?
We're going to try to add that ADA parking sp- space at that location.
And we would not be touching anything back here?
No, because that would now trigger drainage requirements.
All right.
Okay, thank you. That, that's extremely helpful. I, I didn't realize that those were considered two separate parking lots. The ADA parking, so it is going in this budget cycle for the front lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's, I'm good. Thank you.
Councilmember Meadows?
So this will be a combination, maybe, of some more questions, but also... So, this will be a combination, maybe, of some more questions, but also comments. So, on item number 53 in the SIMP, it's our San Antonio Road project, when will we have confidence that we can start that? Or, do you not know, you may not know the answer to that, of course. Ah, just stay up there. Yeah.
Yeah, you mean to just sort of park right?
Councilwoman Meadows, we have already started the process of trying to obtain authorization from the federal government to go ahead and proceed with the work. Until we have received authorization to proceed with the work, the funding is not guaranteed.
Right.
We have started the paperwork that is required to get authorization to start the design. One thing that we were told is the current administration is reviewing all projects that has been awarded. So, we were given a caution warning, but haven't heard anything to say, "Stop all work."
Okay, and as it comes up, and as we do every year, if we have adjustments, well, that one you would probably let us know about when you know.
Soon as I hear.
But we have the mid-year to do tweaks as well. So, since you're standing there, I'll ask about another one, which is, we received a public comment from a resident about the University Avenue, Jim Wing, and he's very consistent on this issue, and I understand why. So, can we accommodate sort of the curbs through the, whatever the repaving plan might be, which I think was the essence of his ask? Because he's asked for a number of years now, if not the entire time I've been on council. So, it seems like it's a real issue. I don't walk there, but I, when you want kids, you want them to have safe walking and not have to cross the other side of the street, especially a busy, relatively busy street. So, whether this question is for you and/or for Gabe, do we have the ability to add that project in specifically, or what are your plans for that?
Based on Mr. Wing's email, I have not had a chance to go out there and take a look at what is, what is he asking. I do know that he's been asking for some time now.
Yes.
This has been going on for many years. So, I would have to actually do some research on this matter to figure out, okay, is what he's asking for really that is something that's doable, and is it within the budget that he's estimating?
Ah, right, well, that's a key factor, so, all right. Because I think it's worth getting the information.
I'll support directing staff to assess, because of course, this is Mr. Wing's assessment of the situation, but if your ask is...
For the assessment would be good.
Right, for us to go out and determine if there's really an issue there.
Right.
Particularly, just to add on to that, I believe Mr. Wing, in some of his comments, indicated there was either a pending or recent transfer of ownership of the property involved.
Correct.
Which seemed like a opportune time to discuss encroachments, as opposed to somebody who's lived there for 20 years or whatever, you know, so.
What Mr. Wing is saying is that we do have enough right-of-way based on his research. But again, I have not had a chance to do research and confirm what he's saying. And for that matter, the area that is asked for sidewalk is pretty extensive. There's a lot of improvements out there.
Yeah.
So, I would have to do a full analysis on, A, do we have enough right-of-way, and what would it take?
Yeah, so, but I'm also supportive of at least doing that analysis. Mr. Wing's input is usually thorough and worth considering.
I'll be a fourth on that.
Okay, thank you, good. And I think this next one's not for you, so it might be for Manny, though. So, number 20 in the SIMP is the Caretaker Cottage, and the rule of thumb that we sort of clarified in our first question period was that we expect things to be done and completed in the fiscal year we're putting them in. So, that says to me that number 20 actually should be completed within the next month as described, because it's only listed in this fiscal year. But I haven't walked down there recently, so is that gone? And are there restrooms there, the Caretaker Cottage?
The Caretaker Cottage should be included there, because we are having some expenses through there. Now, the full amount of, the budget amount was, for the Caretaker Cottage, would have spanned from this current fiscal year into next fiscal year. We had to do a lot more research than we thought, being so close to the water and everything like that. So, that landed up taking most of the time this year to do, but we did expend some money for that. We are ready to do the demolition now in the next couple of months, and actually, you probably will see it, the bid for proposals in the next week that's coming up. So, that should be as expected to be done by the end of September.
Okay, so then, the $402,000, if that's the right amount, that's fine, but it's only in this current fiscal year, it's not showing in the new one.
I believe we carried over a certain amount of that full amount.
So, that might want to, you might want to alter that for when it comes back.
Okay, we can check that, thank you.
So, because I was like, oh, good. But, so I think that's my comments. But again, thank you for all this work. I know, you know, we see it at the end, and John also, and the Financial Commission looked at this, so really, it's a group effort, and it's a very clear budget and proposal, so thank you for that.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I have one question, and I think it's for Ms. Fairman on the ECR project. I know we've seen a couple of emails come through on what Caltrans is installing, as she walks to the mic. But I remember when this project came to the council a couple of years ago, there were some enhancements, for lack of a better term, that we wanted for Los Altos, that Caltrans probably wouldn't fund for us. Like, we wanted extra barriers or something, and I don't think it was part of Caltrans' funds. I don't know if you recall what that was. Will we need funds in this budget to fund any additional improvements to ECR, or is what Caltrans' doing meeting our standards and what we expected?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. There are a number of ADA ramps on the Los Altos side, on the south side of El Camino, that would need to be brought up to ADA standards. Those were not funded by Caltrans. However, there's a number of development projects that, as time has evolved, the conditions of approval include bringing those ADA ramps to standard. So, a lot of those ramps were addressed that way, and there are few that staff will look at and budget, maybe in the mid-year budget, to bring those remaining into standards. But El Camino Real is an evolving corridor with development review applications that are submitted to the city, and, you know, instead of doing double work, then those are included as part of the conditions of approval for those projects.
Do we know when those, I mean, we don't know, we have no control over when these developments actually move forward.
We have no control, but some that are already in the pipeline have addressed those ramps.
My concern would be, and I'd look to either Mr. Zornz or Ms. Houston on this, where, because Caltrans fortunately is moving now on the bike lanes on El Camino, that it gets to the stage where we're now ready to implement our additional improvements, but the funds that we're expecting from the developments haven't come in. So, I'm curious, Mr. Zornz or Ms. Houston, are we able to take funds from our budget to fund these improvements? And then, when the developments do happen, and we get those, we get the funds as opposed to having them build it to reimburse the city? Does that make sense? Whereas, we're waiting for them to make this as part of their development.
So, the city doesn't have any development agreements or subdivision improvement agreements that have any essentially existing clauses that are built in to those kind of existing entitled projects? The city also, under the new legislation that Senator Weiner proposed, and it was passed last year, deferred the collection of development impact fees until the CFOs. So, the city is going to be having to account for development impact fees completely differently than the council's ever seen. So, this year, we were able to continue to make it pencil out, but in future years, we're going to have to look more delicately at what we use those funds for typically, because we usually get them a little bit quicker, and so it's a little bit more of a delayed, essentially, deposit. So, the specific improvements that you're requesting or referring to for El Camino Real, we'd have to have more of a discussion to talk about that, since that was under prior transportation leadership. We do remember when we first talked about this with the kind of the Tri-Cities about those, even Mountain View is making all their ADA improvements right now. But I do know that some of our ramps, even the ones that are existing, are actually already compliant, it's just preferred improvements. So, we'd need to kind of look at it holistically and most likely do a corridor assessment of ADA compliance.
And I'd support that, and I'd look to Mr. England to work with us to figure out how to bring that back, because the fact that Caltrans is finally putting in the bike lanes, I wouldn't want there to be a delay or a pause on fully completing the project. And I know there are all these elements, so whether or not we reach a new conclusion that the improvements we had identified two years ago are no longer necessary. But if, my concern is, if there are improvements that are necessary, and we actually want implemented, that if possible, we figure out a way to do it soon after Caltrans is finished with whatever they're going to fund and install. But thanks, Ms. Fairman. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, we'd be happy to add the ADA assessment on the El Camino corridor to the budget, and it would come back to council at completion for consideration.
Thank you. And then I have two proposals for my colleagues to consider adding to the budget. I don't have dollar amounts. My understanding is if their support for this staff would take the direction and come back with an estimate of the cost for these projects. And I think Director Kim said we have 17.1, and of course, I'm not advocating spending all of our unassigned funds, but the two projects, one, as you know, emergency preparedness is one of our priorities this year. And I remember when Resilient Los Altos had presented, they talked about these to-go bags, and I would be supportive of having the city purchase 500 bags for residents, and we figure out a way to distribute those bags. So, I know some residents already have those bags, but some don't, and so it would tie in with our priority of emergence preparedness if we, you know, purchased, and I'm just throwing a number out there, 500 of these bags that would be available to their residents. It could be first come, first served, we could put criteria around it. But I just think it would be a great thing for us to do for the community and identify those households that unfortunately may not have these to-go bags. So, that's one proposal. The second proposal has to do with beautifying the city, and I know you've heard from at least one resident. I will say there are other residents in Los Altos who have approached me on, you know, a one-time fund to beautify the city. Loyola Corners was identified as one of the areas in the city that could, as someone said, use some sprucing up. And so, I would look for support from my colleagues. Again, staff would have to come back with an estimate of how much it would cost, but I've driven around, I actually went to Loyola Corners after this resident came to my office hours, and I saw what she was saying, especially at the city-owned triangle. And so, then, the service that's currently done in the city does not cover the additional costs that's required to just, you know, beautify our city. And so, I'd be interested in, and look for support from council members to direct staff to come back with an estimated budget of a one-time fund to do a sprucing up of Los Altos, and we can identify specific areas. Definitely Loyola Corners and the median, areas of the median along Foothill Expressway, I would support being part of this beautification effort this year. So, those are my two asks to add to the budget, the emergency packs, and just that one-time fund for a beautification project in the city. And I look to Mr. England, any comments on those suggestions that we should consider before making a decision?
Vice Mayor, for the to-go bags, we've been funding those through RLA. We're happy to, I believe they're funded this year. We'd be happy to work with them. Also, Compassion Week, which council funded at the previous meeting, I believe they are going to provide 120 go-bags. So, the to-go bags may be funded, just not in the place you're used to seeing it. With regards to the beautification projects, if you have support in council, we're happy to look at the triangle at Loyola Corners, and then the greater business area as well. We, in the current budget, signed a contract for weed maintenance, weed abatement on foothills, and we have crews out there quite frequently. It's a manual removal. In the county, you can't spray, which makes it difficult. So, if we were to look at something like that, we probably would want to look at either a designed engineered fix or look at a different type of vegetation in the median. Either one of those would, I think, would take a little bit longer. We could put a placeholder in the budget and then report back if there's support to do that, but we wouldn't be able to get the estimate, I think, in the two weeks' time.
Would you be able to get the estimate on the Loyola Corners area?
I think we could put a placeholder, absolutely could put a placeholder in, but then we'd want to come back and talk through what we want to see, what it would look like, and then, depending on the extent of beautification, it may change plans. But I think we could easily add a placeholder piece in the budget while we worked through it, just not kind of a refined estimate until we had a little more time.
Mayor, I'd love to hear your thoughts from colleagues.
Well, I'll start. The median on Foothill Expressway is county property, we can't do anything about that. I do not think we should, I do not think we should be spending our unreserved surplus on aesthetics under normal circumstances. I would be all for it. I love this city, and I want it to be as beautiful as it can be, but the reason we have unreserved surplus right now is because we have uncertainty with regard to the existence and support from FEMA, if there's a disaster, or a number of other things. And I would suggest that perhaps when we do our mid-year look-in, we can come back to those topics. That's my point of view.
Colleagues? Councilmember Weinberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I support the request for funds for beautification. I'm not ready to support the to-go bags yet, based upon what the city manager said. I'd like to learn a little bit more about what we're already doing, but I'm behind you on the beautification. I think that's an appropriate use of city funds.
I'm in the same place.
Same place as who? Oh, okay.
Councilmember Weinberg.
I'd still like to say a few words. So, I'm closer to you, Mayor. I also think with the to-go bags, just a scoop that may surprise even the commission, but the senior commission will hopefully work next year towards getting those type of bags to older people. So, I just don't want to scoop the process that we have. Beautification, I think we've always run into the issue that we don't own the same amount of property in any other business districts in town. And so, I fully support, we beautify 999 Fremont in the course of that upgrade, and I fully support that we take care of all the weeds that are on properties that are our maintenance, even if we have to spend extra funds. But beyond that, I don't support anything right now. To me, and I did ask the question in Q and A, because I thought at one point, we were actually going to target a firm 40% of reserved funds, and this unassigned is actually 30%, which would be 50. So, I don't want to start chipping away at that money, because we don't know what else is going to happen. So, as I said, I think the to-go bag clarification from the city manager, plus what the senior commission, will take next year in alignment with our priorities. And again, not all the senior commissioners know this yet, it's going on behind the scenes, sorry, and beautification, as I outlined, yes, 999 Fremont, weed abatement everywhere, very important, but it's always very pronounced at this time of year, because we're just coming out of the rainy season. That's what I support in terms of beautification.
And thank you all for your comments and support. With regards to the bags, thanks for the update. I didn't know, I think that addresses the issue, so I'm happy to hear that different groups are working on it. That's great for the community, that we have a solution in the works, regardless of how it came about. With regards to the beautification, I'm fine limiting it to what Councilmember Meadows described, because of course, you know, I don't expect Mr. England to come back and say it's going to cost him, if, you know, I think it's a different discussion, depending on what the estimate is when he comes back, right? But I would appreciate getting an estimate of this limited focus, because to the mayor's and Councilmember Meadows' point, and I'm sure my other colleagues agree, of course, it's a priority to have, to build up our rainy day fund. There's a lot of uncertainty, but it doesn't mean we can't take a small portion to beautify parts of our city. And if we're able to do that this year, I'd really appreciate it. So, I think we have the support, and I look forward to hearing what the estimate is and what it would actually accomplish. Thank you.
I would hope that we could actually emphasize the weed reduction portion of that. Because while it's an aesthetic, it's also an essential fire prevention element. So at least from my perspective, I support that portion. But there's enough support for the other aesthetic elements that you should come back with something for us. Do we have?
I think the Vice Mayor came around to the middle viewpoint.
I did, and I just want to make sure, when I talk about beautification, I'm not talking about flower. It is really just, the word I like using is sprucing it up, but definitely addressing the weed issue. And I think anybody who drives through Loyola Corners, after this resident came to my office hours, I did that drive, and I saw what she was referring to. To Councilmember Meadows' point, there are parts of Loyola Corners which we don't know at the post office, for example. I think we need to contact the federal government because that area needs sprucing up, right? And so it's not just city-owned property and rite of ways, but I definitely think some work can be done that we have control over to beautify that area.
And one last point, if I may, since this happens every year at this time, because we're coming out of the rainy season. We should staff up a wave for this time of year to get rid of, and I won't tell you where I've seen weeds because I've seen plenty. But we just need to, you know, put a SWAT team on it at this time of year to clean up because there's a lot of them.
Okay, any other colleagues with feedback for staff before we adjourn the study session? Okay, we will adjourn the study session, we will take a three-minute break if we can do it that quickly. We'll go as quickly as we can to get back and get started on the regular meeting. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started, so if I could have everybody take their seats and let's settle the conversation down so we can get started, please. Can I please have quiet in the audience? Okay, so I will call this meeting to order. City Clerk, would you please establish quorum?
Councilmember Lang?
Here.
Councilmember Meadows?
Here.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fliger?
Here.
Mayor Daley?
Here.
We have a quorum.
I will look to my colleague, Councilmember Weinberg, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We, I noticed the agenda has a report on closed session, but we did not have a closed session, so we have nothing to report. We had a special meeting, which was a study session on the budget. Are there any changes to the order of agenda? Any colleagues want to make any changes? Okay. And it looks like next we have our special items. I've got a couple of proclamations. The first one is a proclamation to the 2025 Historic Preservation Award recipient. So, whereas the intent of the Los Altos Historic Preservation Award is to recognize exemplary rehabilitation and preservation of historic properties and honor individuals, groups, and organizations that exemplify the spirit of historic preservation in Los Altos. And whereas the purpose of the Historic Preservation Award is to encourage public knowledge, understanding, and appreciation of the city's past while fostering civic and neighborhood pride and identity by recognizing the historic resources of Los Altos. And whereas Walter Chapman is a talented and experienced designer whose work has made a profound impact on the preservation of historic homes in Los Altos. His recent efforts include guiding the restoration of the Winchester Merriman House, widely considered one of the most historically significant homes in the city. Chapman's design expertise allowed the owners to preserve the home's character with the original structure. And whereas Chapman's influence also extends to the Morris House on Eleanor Avenue, where he successfully retained original features such as leaded glass windows and identified and removed nonoriginal elements, ensuring the home's historical integrity. And whereas Chapman's work on historic houses in Los Altos exemplifies thoughtful and informed design that supports historic preservation efforts, helping homeowners navigate complex approval processes while preserving architectural heritage. And whereas, as a former Los Altos Historical Commissioner, Chapman brings unique insight and dedication to his preservation projects, reinforcing the city's commitment to retaining its historical character and inspiring others in the community to value local history. And now, therefore, I, Pete Daley, Mayor of the City of Los Altos, and on behalf of the entire Los Altos City Council, do hereby recognize, honor, and express the city's appreciation of Walter Chapman, recipient of the 2025 Los Altos Historic Preservation Award. Is Walter here? Yes, we get a picture, Walter. I'm going to make, thank you, thank you. I'm going to make a very brief statement, and I'm going to read it rather than do it from memory. I want to thank the city for this honor, as well as those who nominated me. But more importantly, I'd like to thank the property owners who entrusted me with the renovation of their homes. Without them, I would have not had the opportunity to be recognized for this preservation award. So to Bruce and Kathy Beck, Bill and Tricia Jennings, John and Cheryl Walker, Scott and Deanna Miller, Runzen and Gloria Wong, and most recently Todd Parmacheck and Jennifer Jacobson, Warren Yang and Young Yun, whose homes are currently being renovated. Thank you. It is through your efforts that these homes will always be here, tying the future with the past. Okay, I have another proclamation to make, and it's particularly timely. As we celebrated, or we marked Memorial Day yesterday, a day where we recognize the full sacrifice that many made in fulfillment of their oath to defend the Constitution. And so we are nearly 250 years since the founding of the United States. It didn't happen overnight. In fact, 250 years ago today was the Battle of Chelsea Creek, was the first naval engagement in the war. We won, thankfully, with some cannons that we had recently stolen from the British. But the reason I make these remarks about how it didn't happen overnight is that it was a long struggle. The Constitution was ratified in 1789, but the Declaration of Independence was 1776. So it took many years, it took blood, sweat, treasure. And to this day, we still have to continue that work that we started more than 250 years ago. Because the Constitution is still at risk. We live in a time when there's potential conflict between executive orders and the Fourteenth Amendment. There are conflicts between branches of government in how we interpret and enforce the Constitution. And so it's appropriate that we recognize on this Memorial Day that special document that so many of our peers gave that full measure in defense of. Whereas each member of the Los Altos City Council has sworn an oath of office to uphold and defend the United States Constitution. And whereas each staff member of the City of Los Altos has sworn an oath of office to uphold and defend the United States Constitution. And whereas all sworn peace officers and professional support staff members of the Los Altos Police Department have sworn an oath of office to uphold and defend the United States Constitution. And whereas the United States Constitution is the basis for America's legal structure and heritage. And whereas the Bill of Rights, the First Amendments to the United States Constitution, guarantee civil rights and liberties to the individual and subsequent amendments to the United States Constitution further updated the document and its protections. Now, therefore, I, Pete Daley, Mayor of the City of Los Altos, and on behalf of the entire Los Altos City Council, do hereby recommit the City of Los Altos, its council, its staff, police, and other members to renew our commitment to uphold and defend the United States Constitution and its protections of the civil rights and liberties of all Los Altos residents. By the way, was stimulated by the Daughters of the American Revolution chapter here in Los Altos. And we will be working with the DAR chapter over the course of the next year to commemorate our Constitution in many ways, and ultimately to celebrate our, I guess it's the sesquicentennial? I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly. It's not a word I use very often, but it means the 250th birthday of our country. So public comments on items not on the agenda. Do we have some speaker cards?
I do not have any speaker cards, I'm scanning the crowd.
Okay. So next up will be the consent calendar. And I will look to my colleagues to see if there are any elements, any items on the consent calendar that we need to pull. Councilmember Meadows?
Mayor, I don't want to pull anything. I think I would though like to make a comment in our minutes from last time. And there was a learning for me, and it makes a lot of sense, but the minutes, as they should, reflect what we say, but they don't reflect the full intent of the motion we made. So there were two examples, again, this was my Q and A, about where we said we allocated funds, but in our motion, we didn't say what they were specifically for. And this was for the one year of the lead program and then the funding of the community foundation. Obviously, we all know what it's for, and it's not an issue, we know these organizations well. But I would propose to myself and to my colleagues that we make our motions very, very clear because the learning in the Q and A is if we don't express our intent in the motion, it is not captured in the motion. And it's very important that it be captured, in my mind, anyway. So, thank you, Mayor.
That's a nice reminder, thank you. Councilmember Weinberg?
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to Agenda Item 7, and I don't want to pull this either. But when I read the resolution, it was not clear to me that we were approving $313,000 in total over three years for stewardship services in Redwood Grove. The Q and A says, "The amount is a total for three years, the warding will be adjusted before execution," to make it clear. And I was just wondering, is there a new resolution for us to look at? Because I haven't seen that, or what was it staff intended with respect to adjusting the warding? Is the warding intended to be adjusted after we approve the item?
I just confirmed with the Parks and Rec Directory, yes, it will be. The language will be updated before adoption.
So we can approve a resolution with the understanding that staff is then going to change it? Or do we have to?
It would be as amended.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you can pull it and amend it now.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and pull it, yeah, okay.
We'll treat it separately and we'll handle it right after the consent, the rest of the consent calendar. All right, yes.
I just wanted to make an announcement also, since we're talking about amendments. Item 2, Senate Bill 1, the resolution had just minor typos in there on the 8th, whereas the funding from SB 1 will help the city maintain and rehabilitate, the original resolution said 19 streets, the correction is to say 12 streets and also a number underneath that, 14 similar projects. It said 23, the proper number is 14. We've made the amendment, there's copies in the back for members of the public to view if they would like and before, once the council adopts it, they will be adopting the corrected resolution.
Okay, so I will look for, I mean, first we'll take some comments if there are any on the consent calendar, but then when we make a motion, we will be moving to adopt the consent calendar with the exception of Item 8 and with the amendments to Items 2 and just the amendments to Item 2 that are reflected by the document that's.
Correct, and that's Item Number 7. That was pulled by Councilmember Weinberg.
The amendment for 8, we're gonna do separately ourselves on the dais, but the corrections for Item 2 are just typos.
No, it's Item 7 that Councilmember Weinberg pulled, not Item 8.
He said.
Discussion item.
I think he said 7, but meant 8?
No, he meant, oh, he meant 8.
I'm sorry, there was a numbering issue, we've changed it. The approval of the meeting minutes is Item Number 1 and then SB 1 is Number 2 and so forth. And so I believe Redwood Grove, which Councilmember Weinberg mentioned, is Item Number 7 on the agenda.
Yeah, sorry, I'm looking at my old version of the packet.
Yes.
That's why I said 7.
Yeah, I'm looking at the one that's on the website right now, so. I would entertain a motion to, yeah, I asked for a public comment there. Is there any public comment? No?
No, I have no cards.
Does anybody have any discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of Item 7 and with the amendments to Item 2.
So moved.
Second. Larry, Councilmember Lang seconded.
Okay, Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler?
Yes.
Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we'll handle Item Number 7 and what is the amendment that we need to make? Does somebody, is somebody prepared to offer that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Weinberg.
So in looking at the proposed resolution, I propose to the council that in the "now therefore" clause, we add the word, in the third line of the "now therefore," we add the word "total" in between "the" and "amount."
Okay, if that's gonna suffice, then I will look to the audience and see if there's any public comment on this item. All right. Do any of my colleagues have a response or further comments they would like to make or changes they would like to see?
Just because we're adding the word "total," do you want to say not to exceed?
Ox up the friendly amendment.
Oh, there you go.
You know how much the mayor loves.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler?
Yes.
Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so now we are moving on to our discussion items. The next item is the adoption of a resolution, it's the agreement with Epic Recruiting. I know we have a staff report, are we going to get an oral summary from staff on the report?
I can give an oral, sorry, I can give an oral summary on it, but I also had the CEO from Epic Recruiting here to give his presentation, so I figured I would leave it to the expert. Would like to introduce Sam Blonder, the CEO of Epic Recruiting.
Hello. If I share my screen on the Zoom, you guys will get that up there maybe?
Yeah, it'll take a moment to sort of percolate, percolate through. Make sure you have your mic on and that it's close enough to your mouth that everybody can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay, is that up? All right, great. So Mayor, Council, thank you so much for your time, really appreciate this opportunity. My name is Sam Blonder, I'm the CEO of Epic Recruiting. We are a law enforcement recruiting firm and we have been around for 20 years. Let me just move this off the screen here so I can see what I'm doing. So Epic works with about, actually we're over 60 now, so this slide's a little dated, but we work with agencies all across the country and help them with law enforcement recruiting. So we work with cities, counties, state agencies, college police departments, all, really all the above. We are based out of Scottsdale, Arizona, we have a team of 13. I think our success has been based on the fact that obviously, you know, law enforcement, they all talk to each other, so the success we've had with other agencies has led to other jobs and other jobs and other jobs, and so we've built on that model. You know, recruiting is hard, right? So when you can find a vendor that knows what they're doing and can fill those gaps within the agency that they have, wherever that is, within the recruiting structure, you want to kind of latch on to them. We are not a group of consultants, we're not a weird advertising agency that outsources everything, we are a brick and mortar, we do it all, right? So everything handled in-house by Epic staff, there is no outsourcing or subcontractors or anything like that. Quick laundry list of everything we do, we develop recruitment branding, we build online recruitment campaigns, we do video production, photography, we do VR stuff, we do recruiting, website design development, hosting, that kind of stuff. We also do traditional media placement, job fair booths, and really all the above, anything that recruiting touches, we take care of for that agency. Over the last 20 years, what we've really narrowed down is basically these four disciplines, research, creating content, recruiting website, and online recruiting, as really the main fundamentals or disciplines or verticals, whatever word you want to use, these are the things that your agency needs to be doing well to stay ahead of recruiting right now. First step of that is research, and for us, research means discovery. It's really an awesome part of the process, it's where everything begins and it's actually expanded to a couple days, but we're kind of sticklers on branding, so it's always gonna be discovery day, no matter how long it gets. But really what it is, is our team comes out and meets with your agency, you know, tries to understand what makes it tick, what makes it unique, this is obviously a very special place, a very special agency, had the pleasure of meeting your chief already, and I'm telling you, there's definitely amazing stories to be told within this agency and this community. So what we want to do is we want to kind of unravel that onion, right? Peel those layers back and really discover what's special about this place. Those answers always come from within the agency, it's amazing to see those kind of lightbulb moments when you're sitting in a room full of cops and everyone's got their arms crossed and they're just like, ah, we're just like everybody else. But then always within those conversations, you know, somebody says something about community or camaraderie or work-life balance and you can kind of see, you know, our ears perk up and we're like, hey, you know what, we do this a lot and I've never really heard that expressed in that way or that fashion and that's unique and that's something that maybe people will respond to, right? We're looking for something to kind of hang the hat of the brand on and that just might be it. So we do interviews, it's really a casting call, but what we want to do is kind of understand, you know, who are the rock stars within the agency? I was reading about your chief, definitely a rock star there, really understanding what stories can we tell and how do we bring in like-minded people to your, to work at this agency? We do surveys, location scouts, we do ride-alongs, again, trying to understand what will become the foundation of your brand, of your agency. The second step is creating content, I don't know if any of you had time to watch any of the work we've done in the past, I'll play one of these while I'm yapping in the background, I'm not sure how that's gonna work, but let's see what happens. It's kind of sticking a little bit. So two things we're trying to accomplish when we produce law enforcement content, remember, we're producing content for law enforcement that nobody else in the world is doing, we're doing work that nobody else in the world is doing. This content speaks volumes about your agency, not just in the literal things that we're showing, but also just in the subtext, right? You know, putting out great content and beautiful content, let's all go to Hawaii for a minute, that'll be fun, we'll just do that. Putting out beautiful content says something about your agency, right? People want to be part of an agency that has their act together, they want to be part of an agency that's doing something unique, something special. This is why we put such an effort into making this beautiful content to tell your agency's story, because we want to connect with these applicants, we want them to feel like this is their place where they want to grow their career and, you know, expand their, and spend their life. Whoops, hold on, I'm just popping over here. So we are big time sticklers on branding. What tends to happen within law enforcement is, within recruiting units, there tends to be a kind of revolving door, just the nature of the beast, right? People get assigned the recruiting, they do it for a while, then they bounce out, and so what tends to happen is you end up with a recruiting brand that's not really finalized, not substantial, it's not consistent. So what we do is we come in and we work with your agency and we develop a recruiting brand that is going to be very tight and consistent across all platforms, right? Because that's really the key to good branding, is making sure it's the same everywhere over a long span of time. So again, this is not something we impose upon you, this is something that we work with your agency to develop, and once everyone loves it, we're like, yeah, that's it, we're locked in, right? And I'm talking about color palettes, fonts, call to action, mission statement, imagery. Again, we're trying to, we're basically treating your agency as a Fortune 500 company. What would a great, unique recruiting brand look like and what kind of tools do we need to promote that brand over a long period of time? Once we nail that down, we want to stick with it, and that's really what we specialize in, is helping these agencies develop a great recruiting brand, and we've worked with agencies of all sizes doing that, and those are just a few examples. We also help your agency build a recruiting website, and just reinforcing again, everything we build is owned by the agency, you guys own it all, it's yours forever, including the beautiful recruiting website that we will develop for your agency, I'm just gonna pop through a couple while I talk here. Websites are very, very critical, this is how young people especially are going to find out about your agency, this is how they're going to engage with your brand, so we need to make sure we're putting our best foot forward out there and making sure that this is a website that engages them on every level they expect. We have a mentality with our websites, which is kiss, which is keep it simple stupid, we're not trying to be too complicated, right? We're just trying to engage them on just the practical steps that we need for them to apply and nothing else. So we really follow three best practices when it comes to recruiting websites. Number one, we're reinforcing the brand because we want to make sure that people who are driven there are likely going to be driven there via the advertising, right? So we want to make sure that when they land on that website, they're being reinforced with the, with the content that they expected to find. The next best practice we impose on our websites that we build for our clients is we want to make it easy to apply, so there's always gonna be some kind of, whoops, there's always gonna be some kind of quick contact, apply now, join today, it's always gonna be in the top right-hand corner and it's always going to be following you around the website. Again, I'm glad you're at the website, I'm glad you watched the video, looked at some photos, maybe read some copy, nobody reads anything on websites, but what I really care about is that you click that apply button, right? So we want to make sure that that's easy to find. Excuse me, the real reason the websites exist is we want to be able to pull Google Analytics, we want to be able to pull content and data on what activity the website is generating, so it's key for our recruiting websites that we build for our clients, that they are loaded with the Google Analytics tools that we can use to drive the recruiting, right? We want to make sure that we're making informed decisions about how we're spending money, about how we're spending time, what platforms we're utilizing, all that information is told to us through the analytics that is built into the website, and again, you own the data, you own the website. Of course, we're also fighting for SEO, which is search engine optimization, we want to make sure that the website organically over time is highly visible. The goal being that anybody within 200 feet or 200 miles of where I'm sitting types in law enforcement jobs, they find this site, right? That's critical, that's what's gonna give you organic strength over time, that when the chief needs to hire, she can do so because she knows those applications are always coming in because people are finding that website. And again, we do that by making sure the website is full of search-relevant content. The fourth step is online recruiting, and really this is the outreach, this is the advertising, this is the marketing side of the services that we offer. We are strong believers in recruiting specific social media channels, right? So we want to make sure that we have a good, strong, solid social media, and we do that by building organic content, but also obviously using Meta for a paid platform. We will get your ads up on display sites, meaning popular websites, ESPN, CNN, whatever all the popular websites are, we will be retargeting folks on those, so they go to the website, then they go to ESPN to check out the NBA Finals or something, and guess what, there's your ad, they're seeing it again because of content that they viewed previously. We use a few AI tools to make sure that we are getting this content across all the major Google platforms. We utilize YouTube because it's, you know, it's a highly-used search engine, people want to find that organic content, and again, we're producing really engaging content for your, for your agency. We are also gonna utilize Hulu for your agency to make sure that we're getting your content into people's living rooms, right? Again, trying to engage people on a level that they have never really interacted with their agency before, we want to make sure that it's highly impactful, and then really most of the leads are gonna come from search, we're gonna own that search bar, right? So when people are typing in search terms related to law enforcement, they're going to find this agency. Your police department will have standing monthly meetings with our agency, meaning they will always be informed about how we're spending money, what content we're posting, what ads we are running, what platforms we are utilizing. Just some quick case studies, Virginia State Police, month over month, increase from 12% to 24% in application growth, performance over time, this is over a six-month span, increase in applicants from 67% to 104%. Sonoma County Sheriff, up from 25% to 46%, that's engagement. Mesa Police Department, I love these guys because they give us a lot of good data, you know, test attendance, that's something I'm sure if you talk to your police department, that's something they're always fighting for, people to show up that seem interested but never make it to the test. Again, that's, when I see poor test results, it means that the targeting was off, or we're doing radio or television, or we're just throwing money out, crossing our fingers. We don't want to do that, right? We want to have very targeted advertising and recruiting towards people who are interested and engaged, more likely they show up at the test, and then guess what, big surprise, more likely they pass the test. Both of those stats reflected in Mesa PD and the work we've done with them. San Joaquin County Sheriff's Office, again, an increase in the conversion rate, just trying to burn through these quickly, guys, just to, respect your time here, but I'm happy to slow down, anything you have questions about. Fairfax County Police Department, I love the fact that they give us actual higher numbers because clicks and conversions are one thing, but if we can see a 53% increase in hires year over year, we know that the work we are doing is having a direct impact. Norfolk Police Department, they sit right next to a major Navy base, so for them, it was owning social media, young people utilizing it, coming out of the Navy at 24, where are they gonna work? They're gonna work at Norfolk PD. And then Iowa DPS, again, showing increase in quality applicants. We're three years in with these guys, they renew with us every year, and again, if you ask them why, it'll probably be because the increase in the quality of the applicants that we are providing. I pulled together some quick testimonials from some of our clients, just to make it clear, we work with large agencies too, right? Seattle, Baltimore, a few others, but we work with very small agencies as well, and these are just a few quick comments from some of the folks we've worked with, when agencies of 14 sworn, 33 sworn, 57 sworn, and on up from there. Again, the size of the agency really doesn't matter, we're talking about best practices and modernizing how the agency recruits and then leveraging that for years moving forward.
You know, I think it'd probably be good at this time if we just went right to the questions rather than going through a lot more slides.
I'm done, that's it.
There we go, my timing is excellent, yeah. So I'll look to my colleagues, see if you have any questions for clarification. Yes, Councilmember Lang?
First of all, thank you for coming and thank you for sharing this information, appreciate it. Particularly appreciate the focus on the storytelling, like, you know, I think that's very important. I guess, two questions. The first one would be, you know, when I think about recruiting in past lives and so forth, I tend to think in terms of like active recruiting versus passive recruiting, the notion of somebody who like needs a job and is looking versus somebody who's, you know, doing a job and maybe is a little dissatisfied and if you proposed a change, they'd be open to it. In terms of the work that you've done, do you have any sort of sense of which are more useful for police agency recruiting or like, is that a useful distinction in this kind of thing?
I mean, we, I've always considered passive recruiting as, hey, we went to two job fairs, how come we're not fully staffed, right?
I meant more, the notion of targeting passive candidates, candidates who are not necessarily looking, but would be open to suggestion.
Yeah, I guess, okay, so let me understand your question, so I would consider those low conversions, right? Radio, TV, billboards, maybe people are really considering it, but oh, maybe I'll give that a shot, right? Sure, there's always gonna be a handful of those people out there, and if I had unlimited budget for every client we had, I'd say, sure, do those things, catch those passive folks. But I'm, typically that's not the case, typically we're dealing with limited budgets, meaning that I've only got X amount of dollars to spend, I would rather spend those dollars getting them in front of active people, meaning they're on Google right now, looking up benefits for police officers, how do you get started, how hard is it to jump over that wall, what's the academy like? Those are people who clearly are doing that research because they're actively looking to make the move now, right? So those are gonna be our higher conversion rates, so I'd rather put my money and energy and time into making sure they know who you are. Most agencies overestimate their visibility, meaning that they think people know their story, they know, hey, we're the best deal in town, we're doing amazing work here, we've got a really supportive city, you know, everybody knows that, nobody knows that, right? Zero people know that, so that's our job, is getting that out there and getting that in front of the people who are actively looking, anybody. of the people who are actively looking. Anybody else is icing, I would consider.
Following question, which would be good testimonials and references and so forth. But you've been in business for a while and done a number of projects. Can't help but imagine that somewhere along the way, some project didn't go as well as both parties might have helped, hoped rather. And I'm curious if, if such a thing might have happened. What, what's the learning? What was the, you know, mismatched expectation or, or, you know?
That's a great question. I would say the opposite of that is when we have a really engaged agency who's part of the process and really loves what's happening, it's off the charts. In the same way, the opposite would be true. And that's happened a few times. I mean, I've been on, on location filming where we're like, they hand me the phone, nobody showed up for the shoot, for the bomb squad filming. Could you get on the phone and try and beg them to show up? You know, those things have happened. And that's usually not a good indicator that the agency, they've got some other internal issues that the best marketing in the world may not fix. Now, I'm still going to be able to drive them people, but it might be a retention issue. And just to mention retention, you know, the work we do, I don't have a slide for it because it's not really as tangible. But when people see the effort that the city and the police department put in towards making this type of recruiting campaign happen, it always has a retention effect. Because people look around within the agency and they're like, man, they are really doing everything to make sure we have good help, to make sure we're not being pushed so far in overtime, and making sure that the person who shows up on the scene next to me knows what they're doing. Those are critical factors, you know, for their careers. So when they know that they have the support of the city, and they have the, and the agency has the wherewithal to go out and get somebody who knows how to do this, it has a huge impact on retention.
I have a, I'm going to extend on that retention question and focus actually on washouts and sort of the first threshold of retention, which is getting an officer on board, getting them sworn, getting them to actually, you know, make it to their six month anniversary. Comment on that and your, and your ability to find better quality candidates that actually, you know, pass their exams and get out on the street and do the job.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not going to pretend that some kind of lightning in a ball that we're sitting back in our offices in Scottsdale with some genius plan of how to pull only the best people. It's a difficult job. The process to get hired is a long process. The academy is, that's a lot of work. Some of the state agencies we work with, their academies are, they're throwing people's beds out the windows, you know, if they don't make the bed properly. I mean, there's, it's, it's not an easy job intentionally, right? So, you know, the washout rate is what it is. I don't know if, if we've improved on it, but we brought in enough folks at enough higher level that, you know, we're maintaining or building on it. So I guess let me break that down a little bit. You know, if the washout rate is what it is, but I can bring in enough folks that are still high enough quality, they're going to make it through. I don't have really stats on us improving that because I don't think the public has changed that much. That's my opinion. People are the same that they were previously. I think there's just as many quality folks out there. I just think that they haven't been really told what this career is.
So the answer is math. I mean, if you have a washout rate of, you know, 25%, and you have 10 candidates, you're going to lose two and a half candidates, right? If you have 20 candidates, you're, you're going to lose five, but you're going to have 15 as opposed to seven and a half. Got it. Next question is for the chief, though. Historically, has washout, have washouts been a problem for us? And have it, has it ballpark? Like, how much does it cost?
Yes. So we've had a big issue with that. So, I mean, people are our biggest asset, especially in this job. We want to hire quality people to serve the community. We want to hire people that are the right fit for the Los Altos community. And what we found difficulty is finding those people and getting our name out there. Once we can bring them to Los Altos, they see everything that we have to offer and that we're a great city to work for, a great department to work for. But a lot of times, most people don't know about us. So that's one of the main reasons why we need Epic, because we have made some changes with hiring standards, which we're starting to see some positive effects with that, where so far, we've had fewer washouts than we had several years ago. So combined, I think, with their marketing, the marketing is the main aspect too, that we need to get to reach the right people, if that makes sense. For washout numbers, we've hired about 20 officers in the last several years, and we've only had seven that have been successful. So that's been a huge, huge cost to us. If you factor in salary and benefits for like a six month academy, that's about $95,000. And that doesn't even include the hiring process with background investigation, polygraphs, psychological exams, nor the cost of the academy, nor the cost of uniforms and equipment. So there's all, I'm just going even just based on salary. I actually calculated out how much we had spent with all the people basically that had washed out over the last couple of years, and it was about a million dollars over since 2022.
Thanks, Chief. That's just what I wanted to know. Colleagues, other questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Blonder, and thanks, Chief. So I appreciated that last slide where you showed smaller sized cities, because that was one of my questions about whether or not you have worked with cities as small as Los Altos. But just the follow up to that, with even with the size of those cities, have you worked with cities, to the chief's comment just now, that are more comparable to us with fit? Of course, we think we're unique and we're, we're the best here in Los Altos. But we do have a unique character here. You know, we're mostly residential, we're not in a big city. So a lot of these small cities may be situated close to bigger cities, right? Which we're not. And so I'm curious if you have worked with a similar type of city to Los Altos, not just based on the number of sworn officers, but more about the character of the town and, and the type of fit we would want for Los Altos.
Yeah, I mean, well, Sonora comes to mind because we just did, we just finished them. I think they launched maybe a month or so ago. I believe they're 14, that agency. Very unique community. And just to build off what the chief had said, that washout rate can be impacted if you're not intentional, honest, forthright, or just clear on your marketing. People need to understand kind of what they're getting into on the good side and the bad side, right? So being able to tell that story very specifically, uniquely to you is, is really what we do. And I guess I would point you back to our discovery process that used to really be an afterthought. You know, it would be like, hey, we got to come out and film. What should we do? Well, we better call them up and set up a meeting where we chat about what we're going to, where are we going to film, what are we going to do? And it evolved to us understanding that that's really the, the main pivot moment for the entire campaign is that discovery and then learning what is unique and special about this agency and finding a way to tell that. So every agency we've done, whether they're a small city next to a big city, or they're a county out in the middle of New Mexico, or they're, you know, the city of Baltimore with all the, you know, legacy issues that they've had, those are all things that we address in discovery and we try to understand and wrap the brand around. I hope that's a clear enough answer for you.
It's helpful. So I think I understand what the deliverables are for this contract. But you also mentioned, I think it was the Iowa Department that re-ups every year. And I'm curious, how does that model work? So you produce the marketing materials, the video production, you do all these great things for, or city. Do you continue that relationship? Do you test it maybe after a year or two years? Like, what does that relationship look like after you have developed all these materials and done the video productions for us? What does it look like after that?
Great question. So again, we're really big on ownership. We want the city, the police department to own all this stuff. So all the content you own, you come back from this shoot with all this raw footage, hours and hours of raw footage, literally thousands of professional photographs, they all belong to you. The website belongs to you on day one. Typically, we build in a two-year website hosting in the contract, just so you guys don't have to worry about, it'll just always work and always be accurate. After all that's done, you can just use us for marketing, or you can take this and run and do it on your own, totally up to you. Because again, the foundation is, we have built the foundation for you. We have developed the brand, we have built the website, we have provided a Fortune 500 level quality of content, a library, video and audio content you can pull from. And you can run that campaign. And we've had agencies run those campaigns internally after we leave. We basically trained our replacement. And we've had agencies come back to us and say, hey, can you just do the advertising for us? And we can run those in three month cycle, six months, 12 months, three years, whatever your agency needs. Typically, it depends on how many they're hiring and budget and those kinds of things. But it's very typical for an agency to come back to us after we've completed all the work and sign one or two year contracts with us, just to keep the marketing going, if they don't want to go internal with it.
So thanks for that answer. I was more asking, so that two-year term that you mentioned. So for example, let's say you, you produce all these great materials for a city and you hand it over to our chief and her team. And we realize after a year, nobody's biting, right? It's just not effective. It's not working. You did your discovery, but somehow it's not. Are we able to come back to you then and say, are there ways for you to tweak or make adjustments? Maybe you missed something that's still part of this $300,000?
So typically, when we do multi-year contracts, we'll build into, after the initial two years, we would come out and do a refresh or reshoot if things change at the agency. You know, maybe there's new command staff. Hey, we got a new police department. We got some new toys. The new drones came in and we didn't tell that story last time. So sometimes, sometimes we will build that into the contract. I've never been asked to come back and out and film because it didn't work. That hasn't really come up. But we have been asked to come out because, like I said, things change, new leadership, big facility changes, those kinds of things. If we know that those things are on the horizon, you know, we will build that into the contract. Typically, it has more to do with facilities. Hey, they want to use us, they need to hire right away, but the new department won't be open until next year. So can you come back out and shoot a refresher of that when it opens? Because we want to include that and build it back into the content. If that's something like that is a concern, we can definitely build something. You guys are really close, so it's an easy stretch for us.
How engaged is the department or the chief with, for example, where you post on social media? So you mentioned Hulu, which was funny to us that that's one of the platforms that I'm sure there's reason for that. But how involved is our team on saying, that's not a social media site, or that's not a platform I want us posting on? How, how involved is, is our team on that?
Nothing gets posted anywhere unless your team approves it. So every single month, our team is meeting with, with the chief and whoever she delegates it to, to, they will meet with our digital and our social team every month. And they will present the numbers from the previous month. How did it go? What kind of clicks did we get? You know, what was the return rate? And then they will present next month's social media posts, next month's advertising, the platforms they want to do. I'm always telling my people to be innovating constantly, meaning they're always going to be throwing new stuff at you. Hey, we just signed an agreement with Indeed last month, right? So great, now we have a partnership with Indeed. We can offer really good focused promotions on Indeed. Let's try to roll that out next month and see how it goes. And then look at that following month and see what changes. But it's your money, so nothing's being spent without your approval.
Love hearing that. And then my last two questions are for the chief. So I'm just curious, and a very impressive presentation and materials, Chief Lagergrin. But I'm curious, did we look at other competitors to Epic? Like, how did we land on Epic?
So as you mentioned before, word of mouth, several people that I've gone to different professional development classes with had recommended the company because they saw really good success. We did some research but couldn't really find another company that was very focused on law enforcement. It's just very specific recruiting for law enforcement, and that's what we were looking for. So, I mean, we looked at other companies kind of that didn't focus on law enforcement, but that wasn't necessarily what we were looking for because we want to, it really is a niche market. So we thought it was the best option for us.
Thank you. And then last question for you, chief. You mentioned the seven out of 20 when we were talking about the washout rate. I'm curious, do we know where the 13 individuals went, when they left? Did they go to other agencies? Do we have the stats on that? I'm just curious. Did we lose them to other agencies? Do we know? If you're able to speak to that?
I believe one person may have gotten hired at like a college police department. But other than that, I don't believe any of them are, are officers. And they washed out in various phases, some in the academy and then some in the FTO program.
Because I think that's obviously part of your discovery, to understand why we have lost so many of our officers.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from colleagues? Okay. Public comment? All right.
No, I have no cards.
Okay. So now I'll bring it back to council to deliberate on the approval or adoption of this resolution. Commentary, or do we want to move, move on it?
I'm very positive about it.
Okay.
I, I feel like, you know, when I was out ringing doorbells, talking to people about what's important to them, you know, traffic safety, the safety of our streets, the safety of our homes is routinely the top of the list. People are depending on our police department. Clearly, what we're doing is not working, so we should do something else. And this seems very promising. While 300K is a lot of money, certainly, if you divide it by the 10,000 households in town, it's $30 apiece, 30 bucks apiece to, to, if, if we said to the residents of Los Altos, hey, if everybody chips in 30 bucks, we could fully staff our police department, assuming it works, of course. I think the hat would get really full really fast. So I feel that, that thought experiment helps me get to yes with the amount. I'll also say one thing as a guy who's done marketing, not this kind of marketing, but marketing skill, the fact that they're starting with the notion of, what's the story? Who are we? What is our unique value proposition? To me, that's the most important thing. Like, if we get clear on that, right? Because we're not, particularly, I think a key thing with that is if we do that right, some people will say, this isn't for me, right? And the sooner they get to that, the better, right? Like, we want them to know that early, not late. But the flip side of that's also true. If we're clear on who we are, then the people who say, this is a good match for me, the family life I want to have, whatever, right? The chances that we're concentrating our energy and money on getting the right people through the pipeline onto our police force is good. So to me, it seems like a very timely and worthwhile thing to do.
Other, other commentary? And then I would entertain a motion. I move that the City Council of the City of Los Altos adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Epic recruiting in an amount not to exceed $300,000 for the development and implementation of recruitment marketing services, including video production, marketing materials, website development, and targeted digital advertising to attract qualified candidates for the police department vacancies.
Second.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fliger?
Yes.
Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is City of Los Altos pension obligations. And we're going to receive information regarding the city's pension obligations.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Good evening and all. I'm sure you are just as excited as I am for what is sure to be the absolute highest peak of your services, city council members, which is to have this discussion on the city's pension obligations. As we get started, I want to set a couple of expectation setting parameters. Number one, I am not an expert in CalPERS. I would argue that no one is an expert in CalPERS, including those who work at CalPERS, certainly in every aspect of CalPERS. Number two, the council is not being asked to take any action tonight. This is purely informational. This was requested by the council a couple of months ago when we brought the question of sending dollars for additional discretionary payments. And so, but this discussion hopefully will set up future, when we do need to take future actions, or if we need to take future actions, set that up. I would encourage you, since this is purely informational, if you have questions as we go along, please interrupt, feel free to stop and ask them. I do want to just warn you that you may get one of two infuriating answers, one of which is because that's what PERS told us. And the second, which is less infuriating, is well, I have a slide on that a couple of slides later. So with that said, let's talk about, let's just go over what we are going to talk about. I'll do a brief overview of PERS as well as what, how it impacts the city and our, our various obligations. We're going to talk about our unfunded accrued liability, or UAL. This is when we talk, or the community talks, or you talk to your colleagues in other agencies, when they're talking about unfunded pension liabilities, that's, this is what they are talking about, is the UAL. And then we're going to talk about ways the city is planning and strategizing to offset future increases to our pension costs. And I promise that there will be a few bad analogies in here, but work with me on them. They're the best I can come up with. So a little bit of background on, on CalPERS. It was established in 19 I can come up with. So a little bit of background on, on CalPERS. It was established in 1932 as the state's entire, employee, state employees' retirement system. Seven years after that, it expanded to allow counties, cities, special districts, and school districts to participate, and became the public employees' retirement system. It is the largest public pension program in the nation. In fiscal year 24, the PERS paid $32.8 billion in pension payments. These are payments to retirees. There's about 2,800 employees who work directly for PERS. They are employees of PERS. And they had, a current year, they have a budget of about $2.4 billion. And as you can see, they have 13 board members, some of whom are elected by the members of PERS, some are appointed, whether by the governor or other bodies, and then some serve as ex officio members. All of this to say that PERS is a very large bureaucracy that can be difficult to understand at times. Sometimes their decisions seem to be made by, based on the politics of a situation, or, you know, kind of head scratching, but as we would expect with, with very large bureaucracies. The city participates. All of the, the city employees are members of CalPERS. We have six pension plans, three for our safety employees, three for our, for everybody else. And so every employee is placed into one of these six plans. The classic or tier one employees, those are the employees who are hired prior to October 2 of 2011. The tier two plan is, are, are unique to Los Altos. We set this up in 2011 for, as a way to, well, I'll get to that, but our employees who were hired after that date, but prior to January of 2013 are in tier two. They have a different calculations and formulas for how their benefits are, are determined. And then there is the PEPRA tier, which is based on the state law, which went into effect on January 1 of 2013. So employees that enter into PERS after that date are members of PEPRA. Each of these plans ba, provides benefits based on different formulas. I will say there are some tweaks and nuances within each plan, so it is based on, for the individual employee, may have different formulas that determine what benefits they will receive in the future. The city pays to PERS, has, has two components of what we actually pay to PERS. The normal cost is based on, every two weeks when we, when employees get, get paid, a percentage of the paycheck is sent to PERS. That incorporates both an employer cost and an employee cost. That is relatively fixed. It's based on, and again, is based on an individual salary. The other is what is called the unaffunded accrued liability, or UAL, which I will explain and describe in greater detail in just a moment. The city currently pays this to, that makes this payment once a year at the beginning of the year. We do have the option to pay monthly. However, we realize greater savings if we pay upfront for the entire year. My first bad analogy is if you consider your favorite streaming service, if you pay $100 at the beginning of the year, as opposed to $10 per month for the entire year, you see some savings based on that. And so the city is, has made the determination at the beginning of the year to, to make the entire payment and realize some savings for the, the UAL. Now, CalPERS has made some recent decisions, and I say recent, recent very loosely, because as you can see, it's within the last 10 years, that have really affected the, and impacted the city. The first is in fiscal year 2015-16, they began charging for the unfunded accrued liability. The dollar amount you see there is what the city paid, the city of Los Altos paid in 2015-16. This is, and again, we'll explain it some more in detail in just a moment, but is PERS way of making up for promised benefits that are not currently funded. And so PERS has said to the cities, you know, you have this amount that is not funded, and so you need to pay us that. We're going to amortize it over 20 years, much like, again, a bad analogy, like a mortgage. However, unlike a mortgage, the amount changes each year, and the actual unfunded liability varies based on a number of factors, which we'll explain. And they keep adding a year to the amortization schedule each year. Then they made a, a couple of, and I'll, I'll explain why they add in, in just a minute. The other actions that they took was the lowering of the discount rate. And the, the best way I can describe the discount rate is, it's almost an imaginary number, that PERS has said, you know what, we think our investments are going to be at this amount. And so rather than pay the full amount of what your obligation would be, we're going to lower the amount that you pay, that you owe us by this amount. It, it worked well during-
The term you're looking for is net present value.
Okay. It worked well years ago when the, the, the funds were super funded. However, recently, it's really starting to hit that PERS's investments have not done as well. And so in 2015, PERS lowered it from 7.5 to 7.0. And then again, in 2021, lowered it to 6.8, which is where it is at now.
For, forgive me, I'm asking you this in order to show the city's expert on PERS. It, it sounds like you said the discount rate is literally the, the, a percentage reduction in what we owe on, on our pension obligations.
Let me answer this, John. It's, the discount rate is for, it's for calculating the net present value of future payments. So what it assumes is that the current payments that you make now will appreciate at 6% per annum, compound aggregate growth rate, and get you to the bogey you need to cover the benefits that you, that you have, that you have to pay for.
Is it, is it the equivalent of an interest rate?
No, it's not. But it's, but it's derived from the expectations of what interest, of what the return on the investments will be.
She can't take it. If you think about it, you think, well, how much do we need to have to pay all the pensions we're going to ever do? And one thing you do is just add up all expected numbers for the entire lifetime of everybody's going to collect the money. But you go, well, wait a second, that doesn't make sense, because between now and the 10 years from now, the money that we have is going to earn its own money, and so we don't have to do it. So it is related to interest rates in that regard, but it's a general thing. We also do this with roads. Net present value is a general engineering and economics thing. It is related to interest rates in that, obviously, the lower that number is, the more conservative you're being about how much you need to make up to get to those numbers in the out years, right? It's, it's odd that a lower discount rate ends up causing a higher cost. That's very counterintuitive. But, but they're becoming more conservative and we get to pay.
Okay, thank you.
The discount rate's just the expected rate of return. So if 6.8% is what CalPERS expects their rate of return will equal-
Plus their cost of operations. So, so actually, the rate of return that they're expecting is probably more like 8 to 9%, right? Because they've got $2 billion a year in, in, in cost of operations.
A question that may not have an answer. Is this number calculated through some careful process of expertise, or does a doctor with a flashlight come up with it?
I wish I could answer that question. Let me, let me share a little bit of why the discount rate can affect the city, or how it can affect the city and provide some uncertainty. So when PERS lowered the discount rate to 6.8, about four years, three, four years ago, they adopted a policy at the same time that said, if we have a year in which our investment return exceeds the discount rate by at least two base points, so at least two percentage, we will automatically reduce the discount rate. I believe it's by a quarter, so by 0.25. The assumption being, you're going to have a good year, and it's probably going to be followed by a not great year. Well, I believe it's 2023, they had a return, I believe it was about 10%, which is clearly two points, at least two points higher than 6.8. And PERS, the PERS board, who sets the rate, said, eh, we're not going to lower it. And actually suspended the policy that automatically reduced the, the discount rate. So I wish I could say that there is a clearly scientific route, or scientific method to determining it. From my completely inexperienced layman's point of view, it's primarily driven by the politics of the, the board. I think there were probably some who, who believed that the discount rate should not be at 6.8, it should be much lower, but there's not the political appetite on the PERS board to lower it, if that makes sense. Okay, so let's talk a little bit more about the unaffunded accrued liability. As has been alluded to, this is based on PERS estimation of what future costs will be to the plan. That is made up of, you have employees who have worked for the city, they've left the city, they've retired, you have employees that are currently working for the city. PERS estimates for that, each individual employee, it will cost X number of dollars to provide pension benefits to that individual for their lifetime. And then they've said, well, the plan has Y number of dollars, and so the unfunded accrued liability is the difference between X and Y. It's the amount that is not funded to cover all of those pension costs. There are a lot of things that go into their estimation, and that affect what that estimation is. If an employee continues to work longer, that will affect what their benefits are and their retirement benefits are. If a retiree exceeds the projected life expectancy, that will affect how much is, is required for payments, et cetera. As I said, PERS has realized that this is an issue, that there is not enough funds to fund all of the, the benefits that have been accrued over the years. And so has said to the agencies, well, you need to make up the difference. And rather than making you pay a lump sum right now, which would, quite frankly, would bankrupt just about every single agency in the state, they've said, we're going to amortize it over 20 years. Yes?
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
So you had said we could interrupt you, and maybe this is another slide in the future. But that's been, I think, a lot of the confusion around when jurisdictions say we're going to pay down the UAL, right? It takes some of our general fund dollars and pay it down. Whereas other years, they won't, right? And I never understood it. Maybe it's tied to the discount rate. And I actually thought the discount rate fluctuated more than you showed, because I remember it would go up and down depending on the investments we're doing in the state. But it just wasn't clear to me when, as a matter of fact, the county doing their budget discussion a couple of weeks ago, the recommendation was not to pay. Like, so I'm just curious if you could explain when the better, the better approach is to pay it down versus when it's not?
Yeah.
Because some cities and jurisdictions have done it different.
Yeah. And, and hopefully, I think, we'll, we'll cover that. If we don't, remind me, and we can talk more about it. As I said, there's a number of factors which affect the UAL payments. We've already discussed the discount rate and how that affects it as well, how well PERS investments actually do. If, you know, the liability is X, and the investments exceed Y, and so that will reduce the amount that is unfunded. What we have seen, and this is based on PERS actuarial data, is our UAL payments will continue to grow until we reach a tipping point where we'll start paying, actually paying it down. It's the, the reverse amortization, where even though we're making our payments and we're paying off, supposedly we're paying off our loan, our, our costs are still actually going up. And as I said, we, we, we have some strategies. It won't fully offset our future increase, but hopefully it will reduce them, lower the amount that we actually owe in the future. The city has, up to this point, actually taken some actions to hope, to reduce our pension obligations. First, in 2010, the city began requiring employees to pay the employee share of PERS costs. As I mentioned, when, you know, when an employee is paid every two weeks, PERS requires a certain percentage to be paid by the city, and a certain percentage be paid by the employee, go to PERS. Up until that point, the city had been covering both the employer, employers and the employees. As an added benefit draw, what, what, what have you, in 2010, we realized, well, that's not really sustainable. Worked with the, the labor groups at the time and negotiated that, over time, the employees would cover the entire employee share. I believe it's illegal for us to require them to cover the employer's share, so let's not consider that. As I mentioned, in, in October of 2011, we implemented our tier two plans. That lasted for about 14 months. We were a little bit ahead of the state when it comes to PEPRA. And then PEPRA went into place in January of 2013. PEPRA is less beneficial to employees than our tier two. Our tier two is less beneficial to our tier one. In 2016, we established our PERS reserve and started putting monies into that to help offset future increases. In fall of 2021, we had about $5 million in that fund, and so council approved an additional discretionary payment, or ADP. So we sent a UAL ADP to PERS. We spent the, we put the, applied the full amount to both the miscellaneous and the safety classic plans. And you'll see why we, we applied it to just those two here in just a minute. And over the years since that time, we've, we've added dollars back into the PERS reserve. It's currently about approximately $7 million. Council's approved use of funds for another ADP, which staff is working with PERS on that, and we should see that in the next couple of months. So let's look at some numbers. And the first thing I will point out is the absolute misnomer, which is current, the, the word current in the title. If you look at the note on the bottom, this is from FY23 actuarial data. And the reason why is because that is the most recent data that PERS has given us. So we are about two years behind of where we actually are in our, our liabilities. I would expect we will get FY24 actuarial data probably in September or October. We'll be able to update. We'll still be over a year behind, but it'll be a little more current. Across the top, you will see our six plans, our three miscellaneous and our three safety plans. The, the first row, or the, the next row is our accrued liability. That is what PERS has said as of January, or June 30, 2023. That is what PERS has said as of January, or June thirty, twenty-twenty-three. For each of our plans, how much money is need to, needed to pay out all of, all future benefits for members of that plan. Now again, those numbers will always change because, one, people will continue to work and continue to accrue benefits. Individuals will continue to live longer. And so those numbers will continue to, to change each and every year. Again, it's not like our mortgage that stays the same conceivably and we make payments on. The next line is what PERS has determined is the market value of the assets in that plan. So the dollars that are, you know, when I, when I, John, get paid, the payment from my PERS goes into the plan and then PERS invests it and determines that this is what the value of the, the dollars in the plan are. So this would include payments from the city as well as investment returns from, from PERS. And so you take the accrued liability, you subtract the market value of the assets, and that's how we come up with the unfunded liability or the UAL. The amount that PERS has said, city you owe or you need to make up in order for us to, to fund future benefits. I will point out, if you'll, you'll notice that our, four of our six plans, so our tier-twos and our Peppera plans, combined account for about two million dollars of our UAL as opposed to our total, which is fifty-one point eight million dollars. The vast, vast majority of our UAL comes from our miscellaneous and our safety tier-one plans or our classic plans. And that is why we applied the ADP that we made in twenty-twenty-one to just these two plans. We will do the same thing for the ADP we are about to make in the next couple of months. It will be applied to these two plans. It, it doesn't make sense to fund the other plans when the big part of our, our liability is, is there. And so all accounted for, we are funded at about seventy point nine percent across all six plans. Okay, and we're going to come back to this, this chart so you can see the numbers some more and delve into them if you like. So this chart actually goes back to F Y twenty-twenty-twenty-one. And there's a reason for that. So in fiscal year twenty-one, this was the chart of payments for UAL only. So this was only our UAL payment. You'll see that in F Y twenty-one, we were just under three million dollars was our, our UAL payment with a peak around twenty-three, or twenty-thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-two and, and that range of just under four million dollars. With, again, at year twenty-forty-one, we'd be fully funded. There'd be no future payments because that's the twenty-year time period from twenty-twenty-one. As I said, each year, if we were to do this chart for each year, it'd keep moving out. So the reason why I went back to twenty-twenty-one is because that is when we made our ADP. And what we would have expected is to see this line go down across the board. What we actually saw was this. We saw a significant dip and then a significant increase. So you'll see that by twenty-thirty-two, we peak out at about five point seven million dollars. And then it comes down a little bit more. Now we're saying, wait a minute, why? Why is it, why, why are we seeing this? And the reason is because that's when PERS lowered the discount rate. So if the discount rate had stayed the same, that orange line would have stayed underneath the, the blue line. But because they lowered the discount rate, our future costs are now higher. But they're not as high as they would have been had we not have made the ADP. If we hadn't have made the ADP, I would have, expect our, our peak to have been well over six million dollars that we would have had to pay. All told, in the three years, we've, already we have saved approximately one and a half million dollars on our UAL payments. That number will continue to grow again because our orange line is not as high as it would have been had we not have made the, the payment. Now, I fully recognize that is all theoretical and I have no empirical data to state definitively what it would have been. But based on how the discount rate works and what our UAL would have been, that, that's our, my best guess. I will say, based on PERS actuarial data, if they were to lower the discount rate one percent, so to five point eight, our UAL, the, let's see here, that fifty-one point eight million dollars would increase by nineteen million dollars. So a one, one basis point decrease in the, well, okay, ten, thank you. Or one, 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 they call it a percentage, so one numerical reduction would be nineteen million dollars. So you can imagine if they reduce it to say six point three or, you know, six or six and a half, it will still be a significant, significant increase to our UAL.
And John.
Yes.
Because, and it goes back to my original question where just confirmation that our strategy is working. Because what I'm hearing is you're saying it could be worse, like, right?
It would have been worse if we hadn't.
Right, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Because there's some jurisdictions that take a different strategy, right? And I'd be curious to see their alliance, right?
And, and, and you are right. So some agencies say we're just going to pay the, the minimum UAL payment. There are some agencies that say we're going to pay our UAL monthly because of cash flow, right? We just don't have the cash on hand to make a three and a half, four million dollar payment to PERS. We've been fortunate, as, as you saw during the study session and Director Kim was pointing out, we have been good at managing our cash flow and our, our budgeting, that we've been able to adopt that strategy. Some agents, the Financial Commission and staffs, the Financial Commission and staff worked last fall on this, came up with a recommendation to pre-fund our A, our UAL through ADP to eighty percent funded level. If you'll remember, we're currently, well, currently, two years ago, we're at seventy point nine percent. The, the goal would be to get to eighty percent. Now, the commission was very clear and adamant in stating that this is an, this should be an aspirational goal only. In that it's not, you know, we have free dollars, we're going to, we're going to pay down our UAL because the, the commission, staff, we all recognize that there are a lot of competing priorities for city dollars, not to name one in specific, one in specific, but a police station. Right? There, the, the commission recognizes that we all, council, staff, the commission, will need to strategize over the years on how to best utilize our dollars. And sometimes that will include making ADPs and some years that will say, no, we can't, we've got other things we've got to pay for, so we're not going to make the, the, an ADP this year. We'll continue to, to pay our UAL each year because we, we have to. But some years you'll see recommendations to, to make additional payments, some years you may not. As I said earlier, we're just going to pre-fund the miscellaneous tier-one and safety tier-one. There's no reason to, to pre-fund the other ones as the return on our dollars will not be as significant as they will be through the tier-ones. And we'll use the PERS reserve to make these ADPs. So you will see transfers from our general fund into PERS. That could be at the beginning of the year, it may be at the end of the year when we, you know, we, we do our year-end close and, and assignment, assignment of, of general fund dollars. And then once, once we reach the targeted funding level, look to establish a section one-one-five trust. Now, I haven't talked about that yet. A section one-one-five trust is a, a unique tool that the city can set up. Dollars that go into there and are invested at a more, we'll, we'll call it a less conservative investment strategy. Huh? Robust investment strategy, more, slightly more aggressive. One-one-five trusts typically earn a higher, have a higher return on investment than, you know, typical, yeah, than our other investment tools. Dollars in the one-one-five trust and the money earned in that trust can only be used for, once this is established, can only be used for pension obligations. So whether it's making just even the UAL payment or making the ADPs. And so, once we've reached a level where we feel good about being funded at, then we'll look to establish the, the trust, start earning dollars on that. And then, as I said, either choose to use the, the, the investment returns to offset the general fund costs for UAL or to just send payments for, for the ADP to pay down our UAL.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Thank you, Mayor. So i- if money in a section one-fifteen trust is restricted, what's the advantage of putting money in the trust as opposed to just adopting a, as the city attorney said, a, a, a robust investment strategy for, for the PERS reserve fund?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I said at the beginning, I'm not an expert on PERS. I'm less of an expert on section one-five, one-fifteen trust. But I believe, you know, we as the city are limited in what we can invest in. Whereas a one-fifteen trust is not as limited in what they can invest. So they can invest at more aggressive strategies than the city.
John, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but be good to know the answer to this. I suspect one of the clear advantages of a one-one-five trust is that you can invest in venture funds. And because the city is an untaxed entity, the return, I mean, most of the investors in investor, in funds like that are institutional retirement accounts, Stanford's endowment, so on and so forth. As a city, we can invest general fund dollars like that, but under a one-one-five, we probably can.
Yeah, that's, that's what I recall and I forget. I remember having like that, that explained to a, a different board or something where you can do it. The city is, as a local agency, can't go and play the stock exchange if they want to with their monies because it's public money, so. But, yeah, I guess we could get more information on it.
When it comes time, I mean, we're not there yet, so it's not matter, it doesn't matter.
Councilmember Lang.
So it seems like, we talked earlier about different jurisdictions. Some say, you know, we're going to be paying down our mortgage early. Maybe the bank will even reduce my payments, maybe not, but I'm going to pay my mortgage down early. Other jurisdictions are like, hmm, pay exactly what's on the stub and maybe some months I'll skip and see what happens, right? Are there safeguards to prevent the ants from being abused by the grasshoppers? If you go back to the old Aesop's fable, right? It, it, it seems, seems to me, in the, the course of human affairs, that all too often, the diligent end up supporting the, the profligate.
The, the best I can answer that is, PERS has said that each city's plans are independent of other agencies' plans. So they have told us that our, you know, six plans are separate from, say, City of Mountain View's plans. And so if another agency decided that they weren't going to fund their unfunded liability, presumably that would affect their retirees and not the City of Los Altos's retire, Los Altos's retirees. Now, that said, that doesn't mean that at some future point, PERS says, you know what? We're putting them all together. We, we owe, you know, we owe thirty-eight billion dollars, whatever the dollar amount was, and we only have thirty-six, so we're spending it all, right? There's nothing to say that it won't happen in the future, but what they have told us is that our plans are independent of other agencies' plans.
So the, the, going back to the, the vice mayor's original question on why do some agencies do it this way? Why do some agencies do it another way? So in twenty-twenty-one, the reason we were so desperate to make the additional discretionary payment is we were experiencing negative amortization. Where as we made our UAL, UAL payment diligently, our principal grew even as we made the full payment. Some agencies are in different situations. Agencies may issue pension obligation bonds, which we, we don't think is a good strategy at all. But they would be funding those pension obligation bonds prior to making ADPs, right? So you have to look at the situation of the agency that you're in. I will say, as we look at how this grows, we see that right now, our UAL payment, not the overall pension payment, just UAL, is going to peak around six million dollars, which is about ten percent of our general fund. So as these payments grow, right now, again, just the UAL set to grow by a million dollars over the next two years, two, three years, I believe, that starts pushing out services that residents expect. If you pre-fund or pre-pay or make your unfunded accrued liability payment or your ADP, right? What you're doing is you're reducing your liability overall, increasing your in-year cash flow, if you choose to, so you can continue providing services without the crushing long-term liabilities that come with not managing this debt. So when we look at where we're at in twenty-twenty-one, after the, the discount rate was lowered, had we not made those payments, our peak would have been higher and longer and it would have taken us further years out to pay off the UAL. Now, the hardest part of this is KELPERS, through their actuary reports, determines how much you owe. And then at some point, they correctly made the determination that we have not funded the plans appropriately and every agency has an unfunded accrued liability. We also know those numbers already are incorrect, right? We are still underfunding this. And to John's point earlier, the discount rate, which is the horizon of their expected return on investment, should be lowered, but because not all cities are managing their liabilities appropriately, there's not political will to lower that discount rate. Instead, we amortize, amortize the payments longer and at a lower cost than what they should be funded. So what we're trying to get out from under is the liabilities that will increase and threaten the services residents desire here. And moving towards a, a one-fifteen plan, stabilization plan is the best way, long-term, to manage those costs, but not until we have a foundation in place of funding, which the Financial Commission said at eighty percent. So that's what we're trying to move.
Textbook prisoner's dilemma. Councilmember Meadows.
Thank you. So I had a question. So if every year we paid off the, the pass down from on high unfunded accrued liability number, again, this is completely hypothetical, so we have zero of unfunded accrued liability. So then what we owe would be our actual retirement costs, right? If I understand this correctly, because in real time, annually, you've got real retirement costs and then you've got unfunded stuff.
Yeah, in theory, if we were to get our UAL to zero, then our costs would be the, every two weeks, the, the normal cost that we have to pay for each employee.
Right. Has, is any city in California in that situation?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
So, yes, some cities have issued pension obligation bonds. So on their ACFOR report, it will show that they have a higher funded status. But the reality is they've just moved a liability to a reality is they've just moved a liability, uh, to another column.
Liability to another what?
Column.
Oh, column, okay, okay.
You have a ledger on that.
Right, right, right. So, um, so you're, we're really never in control of our own destiny, is that the bottom line? Yes. All right.
I, I, I do think coming up with a KELPERS stabilization plan as we have and funding it is the best way to have control locally, uh, over the services we provide.
Okay, thank you.
Do they track what's going on with actual retirees and the payment out? I mean, sooner or later, I mean, we hope all our retirees enjoy a long and comfortable retirement, but sooner or later, they're done and...
Yeah. That, that, yes, the, the answer is yes. That all goes into the, each agency's actuarial report. And we get a separate actuarial report for each of our six plans. Um, so yes, once, uh, the, the reports will show, you know, active members, it will show retired members, it will show, it will show all of that. And so, yes, when a, a retiree has enjoyed a long and fruitful retirement,
It goes to the great council meeting in the sky.
It heads to the great council meeting in the sky. Uh, yes, then they will come off of our calculations.
And somewhat related, some people work for a while in one city and then go work in another city. And does KELPERS work computer magic to keep track of who owes what portion of their benefits?
Yes, the cities work computer magic to keep track of who works at the cities and sends the data to PERS. So yes, um, if an employee works for the city of Los Altos for say, five years and then moves to another agency, uh, we are on the hook for the five years that they worked here, right? And then they'll accrue benefits in some other agency's plan and then when they retire, they'll get one paycheck or one, one pension check. Uh, but yes, they do track, uh, how long you work for, how long an employee works for an agency.
And John, just, sorry, Mayor, just a question, going back to that last slide, and I'm sorry if I missed it. Why is the financial commission recommending that we do not establish the 115 trust until we have hit that 80% aspirational goal? What's the correlation? I, I missed that explanation.
I, it's, it's kind of as the city manager was, was alluding to, um, the negative amortization where we're, we're making our UAL payments, but our costs are continuing to go up, um, until we can get that a little bit more stabled, uh, or stable, um, then, then we can look to establish the, the 115 trust. We, the, the preliminary analysis that we did, um, showed that making you ADPs, um, provided a higher return for the city than theoretical 115 investment returns.
It's like paying your mortgage one week early every month for the entire time that you have your mortgage, you're going to accrue less interest. So by paying the money rather than putting it in a separate fund and letting it build and then making a payment, we're avoiding accrued interest, more or less.
Yeah.
Or for lack of a better word.
That's, that's a good analogy, right? The, the, if the section 115 trust earns at 5%, we'll call it interest, but our payment costs are going up by 6%, you know, it makes more sense, we get a higher return on the ADPs.
Got it. I just know I've heard others talk about the benefits of that trust and so we're missing out, but I get the correlation.
And there, there definitely are benefits to it. And I will say, the city does have a section 115 trust, uh, for OPEB, so for our other post-employment benefits, um, that we, we use. It does well.
We, we made a substantial one-time payment to OPEB in, uh, 2022 to fund it, uh, at 102%, uh, but it's declined now to, I believe, 90, mid 90s. Uh, so even with, with the 115, uh, we are accruing liabilities that aren't fully paid.
John, do you have anything more to present?
No, that was my last slide.
All right. Do my colleagues have any more questions?
Yeah, he's fun at a party, isn't he?
I don't know what they're laughing at. I thought that was great. I was looking for it.
I, I was kind of hoping you were going to bring in an actuarial and we were going to get into the nitty gritty.
That was very helpful. It's, I mean, joking aside, it's a serious obligation and I appreciate you doing the work to help us understand it better, so thank you.
And it's a very complex and convoluted obligation.
That was a whole semester of business school for me. All right. Um, next we have information items, so we're not going to go through those, but those are in your packet and I'm going to assume everybody's read them. And then we'll go to council and staff reports and director, direction on future agenda items. I'll kick us off by saying that, uh, I was at Supervisor Abe Koga's, uh, AAPI Heroes luncheon today, as was the vice mayor. Touching stories and, and really wonderful sense of community and very appreciative of our supervisor for doing that. Look to my other colleagues for reports and potential agenda items. Sally?
I, uh, was at yesterday's Memorial Day event at Eagle Park in Mountain View. Uh, and as always, it was a lovely event commemorating our fallen soldiers.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Saturday, I went to the open house at the library to look at the, uh, two options for the remodels, uh, of the interior and I was there from about 10 to 10:30, just when the library opened and it was pretty well attended.
Okay, we're done.